Good evening. I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of October 26, 2023 to order. At this time, I want to invite Morgan Kennedy to come up. She is in ASB at Palm Springs High School. She's in 12th grade. She's an honor student, volunteers with the Palm Springs Kids Club Summer Program, supports community events, and her mom and my mom agree that she's an overall great human with a lovely smile. So go ahead, take it over, Morgan.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Thank you. So as usual, we love to just highlight our wonderful students out here at Palm Springs High School and all of our schools. So thank you so much, Morgan, for being here. City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely.
Councilmember DeHart?
Here.
Councilmember Holstich?
Here.
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Mayor Protem Bernstein?
Here.
Mayor Gardner?
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Before we begin, I just want to hand it over to the city manager to do a new staff introduction.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Council approved earlier this year in the budget the creation of a business liaison coordinator for the city, and we have hired Mr. Dean Grubel. And I wanted to just have him come forward and introduce him to you and to the community. Dean comes to us from the city of South San Francisco, where he was the executive director of their conference center there. He oversaw all their business development, brand awareness, and community visibility, stateholder relations. Prior to that, he did Director of Sales for their center. He's also worked with the San Mateo Convention and Visitors Bureau. And he's also been a music director and on-air personality for KCCR in the Bay Area. So we're thrilled that Dean started work with us this week and wanted to introduce him, and I don't know, you might want to say just a brief word or two.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here and working for the city of Palm Springs. I look forward to it. As I told the city manager and also Jay, when they hired me, is don't put me behind a desk because I'll go crazy. So this week, since it's my fourth day now, I have been out and about in the community and meeting several people and will continue to do so. So I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
And Mayor, what I might mention for any people in our business community that are listening, they can reach dean@dean.grubel, that's G-R-U-B-L-E, at palm springs ca.gov, and his telephone number he can be reached at is 760-323-8346. So we're excited to have him joining us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Our next item is the acceptance of the agenda. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order at urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for a separate discussion. Would like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items staff or council member would like to remove from the consent calendar for a separate discussion and/or vote? Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull Item 1G for a separate discussion.
And Mayor Protem. All right. Do we have a motion and a second to accept the agenda without Items 1G and 1T, which will be available for separate discussion? Motion by Councilmember DeHart and a second by Councilmember Holstich. I think we can, we're, looks like we're not able to vote on the screen. Okay, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Bernstein?
Yes.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. At this time, can we have our city attorney, Jeff Ballinger, give a report of closed session?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council and members of the public, the city council met in closed session earlier this afternoon to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda. The city council voted 5-0 with regard to the initiation of litigation to initiate a receivership code enforcement action against the property that's located at 487 East Valmonte Norte, Palm Springs, California. So the city attorney's office will commence those proceedings here shortly. The other items, there is no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned for each speaker. You're asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you'll be speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing. We don't have any today. But general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken at the end of the meeting. If there's any written comment that you have and you want to distribute to the council, please give that to the city clerk, who will then distribute it to us. Our first speaker is David Feltman.
Good evening. I'm here to comment on Item 1G. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I read the scope of work and it is fine as far as it goes, but it is missing a critical element, direction from this council to ensure that the outcome goes well beyond a site plan for current and future parks and facilities. We need a transformational plan and for this council to say so. Let me explain using Sunrise Park as an example, where this council can mandate a radical change, not a tweak, not a new set of water turtles, but big change. Without radical change, we will have better signage, nicer landscaping, and some renovated buildings, but in the end, we will have an open-air drug market and a new shiny park instead of the rundown park it now is. We need to recapture this space and make it so busy that it becomes indispensable to those who occupy the space for illicit purposes. Let's bring, here's some ideas. Let's bring one of the dog parks to Sunrise Park, and let's make it a water park. There's one of these in Park City, Utah, and it is crazy busy. And what about a separate friendly, family-friendly water swim center? I was told recently by a city employee that the lap pool isn't really for family use, and if you look at the facility, it's not. So let's give families who don't have private pools a swim center they deserve. I bet they'll use it. This park needs radical rethinking that results in filling this park 18 hours a day. There are many possibilities beyond these two ideas, they are just illustrative. For Sunrise Park in particular, we need a plan that will bring continuous waves of people into this space so it is transformed into a recreational space that our citizens and tourists will be eager to use. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jack Reed, followed by Dean Levine.
Hello, distinguished members of the council. This is about Agenda 3B, the cannabis tax. My name is Jack Reed. I am the general manager of both Off the Charts Palm Springs locations since 2019. The rest of the ownership and management could not be with me today, unfortunately. Off the Charts has been operating two commercial cannabis retail storefronts with delivery in the city of Palm Springs for over four years, and we have achieved immense success since opening our doors. In the last 12 months alone, both stores have contributed over 1.27 million in tax revenue. Both stores have, I'm sorry, substantial percentage of the overall cannabis-specific tax revenue generated for the city. We have developed an extremely loyal customer base who relies on us to provide the best and most diverse product line at the lowest possible prices, and we've never had any citations or violations, and have operated within the scope of local and state compliance since our first day in business. All of this has resulted in a 5.0 rating on Google, 4.9 rating on Weed Maps, and significant brand recognition throughout Palm Springs and throughout the Southern California as a whole. Speaking from personal experience, Off the Charts has created an amazing culture that really allows my entire staff and myself to thrive. Between generous compensation packages, excellent benefits, opportunities for advancement, and ongoing training and education, I feel that Off the Charts gives us all the tools we need to succeed. There is an environment of trust and transparency, and I feel like our staff really operates truly like a family. This is also imparted onto our customers, whether it is their first time in the store or they have been regularly shopping at Off the Charts since its opening. Having said all of that, Off the Charts is in staunch support of the city's ordinance that would impose a moratorium on commercial cannabis business licenses for new businesses. The cannabis market in Palm Springs is already quite saturated, and despite our excellent performance, the saturation has made it very difficult to thrive in this environment due to competition from numerous other businesses in the city.
Thank you, that's your time. Thank you. Dean Levine, followed by Jocelyn Kane.
Good evening, councilpeople and Mayor Gardner. Two things I just want to bring up was, one, the Parklets, the 1H, is before you tonight. I wanted to thank you for what you guys talked about the last time this came up, and just reiterate that we are on a time crunch because they're supposed to sunset at the end of the year. So I just want to remind you guys about that one. And the other thing is, this week, we have Pride and Halloween in the Arenas District, and we're very excited about it, and wanted to invite everyone down there to come and check it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Jocelyn Kane, followed by Brad Anderson.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Jocelyn Kane, I think I know most of you. I'm the vice president of CVCAN, the Coachella Valley Cannabis Alliance Network, our valley-wide cannabis business association. I'm here tonight to speak on the cannabis moratorium and the changes to the cannabis program overall. After some discussion with city staff, we understand that why they are recommending this action for the city at this time. We understand that the cannabis industry remains in an elongated contraction, and everyone in the supply chain, including retailers, are struggling. While there have been almost no new applications this year, a temporary pause to study the landscape is understood. The balance of the staff report includes a number of other changes and amendments, including the creation of a cap on the number of retailers in Palm Springs overall, to be gained by attrition and ending the ability of current license holders to sell or transfer, a cut to the retail tax to 5%, the creation of a 2% tax on distribution, and the creation of an equity tax incentive, and allocation of funds to the city's equity program. We are universally supportive, as I'm sure you can imagine, of the cut to the retail tax, and understand that any losses to the general fund would be ideally offset in some way, such as this new distribution tax. We support the city's social equity program wholeheartedly and any efforts to maintain it. The creation of a retail cap of some number and the method to reach that cap needs further discussion. We are hoping that the council will ensure that CVCAN is a part of the discussion and analysis, as it will have certainly major impacts to the local industry. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Brad Anderson, followed by Liz Ostojic. Looks like Brad's not here, Liz.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Liz Ostojic, resident of Palm Springs and a business owner with four businesses in town. I wanted to mention again on the Parklets how appreciative we are for the city and what they've done through the pandemic. It's been critical to the success of our business and the ability to survive through that, and as the pandemic continues to just linger here and there, it's also helpful because a lot of people still prefer to sit outside, so we appreciate that. The Parklets are critical to our ability to keep more people on staff. Those people are paid well, and those dollars are spent in our community, which is wonderful. I also wanted to bring up, last time we were here on this topic, Councilmember Middleton mentioned the possibility of adding some improvements down Palm Canyon, and we wholeheartedly support that, and we would invite our participation in that as well to make those areas nicer and to make those areas more beautiful and more permanent, whether that's curb and gutter or whatever it is we can do to add to that. We look forward to being a partner with the city in this and providing a really a beautiful place for people to come and tourists to come. As I mentioned last time, just that Parklet space alone in the last year provided space for guests, 20, over 28,000 people. So it's actually really beneficial for all of us involved, and we appreciate all your partnership and your participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Steven, I never pronounce your name right. I'm sorry, you're next.
All right, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers and staff. My name's Steven Viatic, I'm the owner of Reefer Madness, a dispensary and lounge. We've been in Palm Springs for a little over three and a half years now. Thank you for looking into the cannabis tax. That's a very important thing in the staff report. After reading through Item B and its staff report, I'm pleased to see that Palm Springs staff and city council are working together on a proposed 5% reduction on local cannabis tax for retailers. This will benefit cannabis retailers tremendously because currently we pay more taxes than any other industry. When the local tax, state tax, and the sales tax are all combined and compounded, we are forced to collect and pay a total of 38.2%, approximately, not including income tax, things like IRS 280E and all licensing fees. IRS 280E basically means that cannabis retailers cannot make the same basic income deductions as other non-cannabis businesses. as other non-cannabis businesses for normal things such as advertising. So a 5% reduction in the local tax effectively reduces the total tax by about 6.3%. So it's very important. Please bring into effect this tax reduction measure as soon as possible because that, above all else, will help cannabis retailers survive and will keep customers spending money in Palm Springs as opposed to other cities where the taxes are currently less. A reduction in tax will bring customers back to Palm Springs, which is a win, not a tax loss. If a cap is placed on the number of retail licenses a single owner can have in Palm Springs, I think that number should be two since that's already happened before in Palm Springs. I don't think one owner or company should be able to take up everything, but I do think it makes sense for some owners to, or it makes sense for one owner to have an opportunity at different stores at opposite ends of the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any more in person?
I have Curtis McGee.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Curtis McGee. I'm also here to speak on Item 3B. I'm a owner of a distribution here, a distribution business in Palm Springs. And the, after reading through the staff report, the 2% gross receipts tax, I just, it's a tough time in the industry as you've already heard. My business simply just wouldn't be possible if that were to pass. So just wanted to say hi and introduce myself and yeah, let you know that. So by way of background, I went to Boston College, studied organic chemistry, worked in the pharmaceutical industry, and took that path into cannabis. And it's been a journey, a tough road, but one of the reasons that my wife and I relocated from Los Angeles and bought a house here was because of the unique tax structure. So hoping that we do not increase that tax. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to move to our Zoom comments, and Brad Anderson is on Zoom. Brad, are you there? I didn't quite understand that. Do we have him or no?
No.
No. Okay. Thank you. We have Julie Montante.
Good evening, city council and mayor. This is Julie Montante. As you know, I am the, one of the original licensees for the city of Palm Springs. And I really, I think you've heard it all from everyone else. I mimic Reefer Madness, and I think you've done a great job. I hope that you can present the tax sooner versus later. And I just want to compliment the council, mayor yourself, Veronica, Ms. Goodheart, regarding all the work that she's put into this as well. And I want to thank you, and I hope we can get this done soon.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dieter Crawford.
Good evening, councilmen and staff. My name is Dieter Crawford. I'm a member of the Desert Highland Gateway Estates Community Action Association. I want to speak tonight on the oversaturation of cannabis dispensaries and the possible moratorium. I want to make sure that we take into consideration the cannabis social equity program. The cannabis social equity program was created for this exact reason, due to oversaturation of dispensaries in the Desert Highland and Muth Park neighborhoods, which are two communities of color. We want to make it possible for minority residents to have an equitable opportunity to enter the legal cannabis industry. We know that the war on drugs disproportionately targeted communities of color. So we want to make sure we're doing everything possible to assist minority residents to be able to participate in the industry legally. We feel that the social equity applicants should be exempt from any limit or caps that are placed on new dispensaries. I personally don't think that the city should limit the number of dispensaries. I believe that the bad businesses will weed themselves out. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And the final speaker is Jürgen Weiss.
Good evening, mayor, city council, and city staff. I wanted to thank you for taking your time this evening. My name is Jürgen Weiss. I'm calling tonight in support of the cannabis emergency ordinance. I am a cannabis cultivator with over 13 years of experience. I have lived in Palm Springs, Coachella Valley, most of my life. The Palm Springs City Cannabis Social Equity Program has benefited me by allowing me to fulfill my dreams and finally become a business owner, allowing me the opportunity to help others in my community as well as providing jobs and giving back to local charities. I have been involved in the cannabis industry in Palm Springs since 2009. In the beginning, the city first asked for regulation for six licensed storefronts to be allowed. At that time, we were unsure of how things would turn out, but a few years went by and the regulations were relaxed. And it was kind of a survival of the fittest situation, which was, which has now made it very difficult for anyone to operate in the city because of the competition is very cutthroat. Some people have stooped to the level of black market activities in licensed retail storefronts and growth facilities in order to survive. We need to stop the bleeding and start helping the ones that are here and willing to work above board and pay their taxes and do right by others. So we please urge you tonight to vote in favor of the emergency action ordinance to look into what we could do to help the existing stores and facilities in order to keep them healthy and surviving amongst Palm Springs finest. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. The names in Spanish are the only ones that I know I get right. All right, moving on. The next item is the consent calendar. I'll undertake a motion to accept the consent calendar without Items 1G and 1T, which were removed for separate discussion. We have a motion by Councilmember Holstich and a second by Councilmember Bernstein. If we can vote. Oh, Councilmember Middleton. I think if you can, I think you have to give a voice vote at this time since it didn't show up.
Councilmember Holstich. Councilmember Bernstein. Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Dehart.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton. Mayor Gardner.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Are we not able to have Councilmember Middleton use the screen?
She should be able to. Let's try the next one.
Okay, we'll try it on the next one. Thank you. So motion passes 5-0. At this time, we'll move to Item 1G, approval of a professional services agreement with KDI not to exceed $325,000 to update the Parks and Recs master plan. Councilmember Holstich, you pulled this one. Did you want a staff report? All right, if we can have a staff report, please. And Yvonne, if you can introduce yourself for the public.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Yvonne Wise, the city's Parks and Recreation Director. So we, I do not have anyone here with me tonight from the procurement department. Our director had an emergency to attend to. So if we have any procurement-related questions, I may not be the best to answer those, but I will do my best in answering those. Otherwise, the item that we have before you on tonight's agenda is to approve the contract with our Parks and Recreation Master Planning Consultant. The timeline that we have set for this initiative is one year. And the team that was selected is Kunkuni KDI.
Thank you so much. Are you able to provide a little more detail to the public about what it includes?
Yeah. So the last time the city of Palm Springs approved and adopted a master plan was in 2014. So we've approached this master planning process as a refresh of the existing master plan, but as doing it in an innovative way so that we would not just update the number of park spaces that we had or update the number of recreational facilities, that we would look at our parks and recreational places with a new approach and a newer lens of equity for the community. And that is one of the strongest reasons why we've selected or recommended that you approve the contract with KDI because of their experience and commitment in getting to know places intimately and developing plans.
Thank you, Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. I do have questions about procurement, so I will just say, and not ask them for you, to you, but just say, I'd love more information about procurement when these staff reports come forward because it doesn't say why one firm was selected over the other. It doesn't have any information about, you know, a lot of the data behind that decision. And I know council is very interested in the policy of local preference and local hire. And I see that a Coachella, Coachella Valley firm was on the list. And what I'm trying to do is assess when and why local companies are not being hired. Obviously, procurement is a very strict legal process and we always follow that. I would just like more transparency for me to understand and then also for us to explain to the public why a San Diego over a Coachella company is being selected.
The Coachella company was...
Yeah, for this one, it is the Coachella company.
Oh, sorry. So I apologize. But explaining the reasoning and justification, 99% of the time, it's the outside of the area. This time it is. But very much would like about the reasoning, the ratings, you know, the justification for the committee. Apologize for switching that up. Yeah, so thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you to council for supporting investments in parks. Very excited for this, to have a Parks Master Plan. Thank you for the public who's been lobbying us for a long time to do this. So I'm supportive of this item. I'm a little concerned about our ability to do a Parks Master Plan and also do the work that we need to do every day to still improve our parks, basic cleanliness, basic maintenance, still basic improvements. And I don't want to hold that work up as we wait on a Parks Master Plan. Do you believe we'll be able to do both of those things together?
I do, and it's a great question because obviously we have, you know, a number of maintenance concerns that we need to address in our parks. And we already have other projects that are in motion. So we did, when we interviewed each of the consultant teams, we talked about the fact that we needed our master planning process to be inclusive of what we already have in motion. And anything that we could actually implement on a faster basis, meaning if there were portions of the master plan that gets developed that we could actually bring forward to council earlier and get adopted and start implementing those components, that we wanted to do that wherever possible.
Thank you. That'd be great because, you know, we've all seen the city do plans and then the plans go sit on a shelf. And then we look at them 10 years later and we say, oh no, we didn't follow our climate action plan. Or the plans fail, they might have aspirational goals, but they don't actually have outcomes and measurable goals and metrics. So I read the scope, so your sense is that this scope of work and the contract will have deliverables and actionable items that we're actually going to be able to implement and not have a plan that sits on a shelf?
It's the exact reason why we're recommending Kunkuni. And we actually use that same description that we said the city of Palm Springs cannot have a Parks and Recreation Master Plan that sits on the shelf. And that's why we've selected them or again, recommended them because they seem to get it the most, that it's not, we don't want a traditional Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We want something innovative and world-class like this city.
Thank you. And I think that information about why they were selected would be helpful for us to understand that, that they're action-focused and all of that. I do have more like comments on the document of the scope of work, mayor, if I can now. So I do agree with the public comment David Feltman shared about, we need transformational plans for our parks. Our parks are 30 or 50 or 60 or more years old and so they just might not work for the next 60 years of Palm Springs. And I did see that, and I can look at the scope of work itself, but it didn't seem to me in reading the scope that it is like a transformational plan about how to reuse or repurpose our parks for other recreation, right? How to include a mix of uses and how to plan for the future. So do you feel like this scope is for a transformational plan for our parks? Or how do you balance that? Obviously, we also want short-term goals that are achievable. So could you speak to that a bit?
Yeah, I do think so. So while the, you know, scope is written sort of in a, you know, fairly sort of generic way of writing a scope, the part that's missing probably is seeing the presentation from the consulting team that we've recommended. And that's where we actually get the innovation and the transformational approach to public spaces.
That'd be great because we did this with the dog park and I sat with the community as we thought through. They said, what would be your dream dog park? And those are the dreaming that our community should be doing about the next 100 years of our public parks in Palm Springs and not, you know, the next five or whatever. So I very much look forward to hopefully creating like that aspirational plan. I noticed that the city council said sustainability should be included in everything we do. And I didn't quite, I saw a little bit, but I didn't quite see a lot in the scope about including like sustainability, uses, water use, shade, extreme heat, things that we will need to include in the next 50 years of our parks or 10. Can you speak to that if you think that's included sufficiently?
I do. And in fact, we actually asked our sustainability director to participate in the recommendation process of making sure that we selected the team that would actually meet the city's sustainability goals. So yes, it will be and was a key part in the evaluation process as well.
Do you think that the consultants should work with the Sustainability Commission or the Public Arts Commission in addition to the Parks and Rec Commission? Because I also saw, we've been talking about investing in public art and, you know, even connecting through the city and that sort of thing. It seems like we would want those views as well.
I think so. I think not siloing, you know, how we approach Parks and Recreation is really important for the city.
Do you think we should amend the scope of work to include, that will include the Sustainability Commission or Arts Commission? Or do you not think we need to do it at that level?
I don't think it has to be amended in there, but I think staff actually needs to do that work to connect the dots between those areas.
That'd be great. And then I saw the scope in general, it says park space facility needs. I know we get a lot of questions about playgrounds and water features. Should we spell that out in the scope of work?
I don't think, I don't think we need to spell that out because once we do the kickoff meeting, we will be letting the team know which areas we need to focus on. In terms of the water focus in our parks, we do want to do another contract with a sort of water play feasibility team so that we can figure out ways that we can incorporate water elements into most or hopefully all of our parks as well. And that would be a separate item that would come forward to council for that.
Thanks. I'd love for this to include water features if it can, just in big picture planning. I saw that they're conducting at least four public meetings and a minimum of four focus groups. So I was wondering if we should specify certain populations, like with children or Spanish speakers or people who use certain facilities. Do you think that's, will be done?
Yeah, it will absolutely be done. So when staff is meeting with the team, we will be specifying to them to make sure that we are meeting all of the demographics of our community and especially those underserved or less heard communities as well.
I saw there's not much about Spanish and interpretation and outreach. I saw like one reference to diverse communities, but can you speak a little bit and if we need to add to the scope of work, like interpretation services or other outreach?
Yeah, so this team actually specializes in that. So they propose that to us as well. So we will ensure that everyone, regardless of language, has the opportunity for lively discourse in this process.
Well, regardless of language is different than like specific outreach to those communities. We did the California Voting Rights Act work and we did a lot of like proactive outreach. So I would like to see the scope... So, I would like to see the scope of work include that they'll do one Spanish-speaking forum special meeting.
Of course, of course.
Provided at all the meetings.
So, I want to just jump in really quick here. So, KDI reached out to the city, well, directly to me, and I met with them a couple of times well before the RFP even went out because they've been interested for years now. They, and I think that this goes to what Councilmember Holstich is saying, is that there's not, there's a lot of information that I know, because I know KDI, that Councilmember Holstich is asking about, and it's not in this staff report. So, I do agree that when we're bringing things like this forward, it does help to give that robust information, to attach the presentation. KDI is extremely equity-focused, that's their whole thing. They're bilingual staff. When they met with me, they said Palm Springs has an opportunity to truly transform their parks and to meet people where they're at. They specifically talked about going door-to-door, doing like really robust outreach, and that was what was the most exciting thing to me. And I told them to look out for the RFP. I am a council, just for the public council, has no say in who staff chooses for these RFPs. We don't see anything until it comes to us now. They just happen to be people that reached out to me. So, I was very excited when I saw that they won this bid.
Great.
But I agree with Councilmember Holstich fully that we need to make sure that that kind of information is given to us so that we can feel really comfortable with what we're approving and know that those things are included. Because otherwise, that's what leads to us asking all the questions.
Right. I know 25 pages worth, 29. And so, like, and we also want the scope of work, which is a, you know, essentially a contract with our consultant. We want it to say they're going to do proactive outreach to certain communities. I don't read that it says that. So, it sounds like you had some conversations that might, we might want to, you know, have that reflected in here, that they'll provide Spanish translation and interpretation, that they'll host special meetings, that sort of thing. And then, I also noticed, we talked a lot for many years of like park poor communities. I live in a park poor area in District Four where you're not really walkable to any local parks. I didn't see any reference to that in here. So, could you speak to that? There's also a lot of state, there's state bonds focused on parks and state funding and federal funding for that type of work. So, I just want to make sure that, one, we're addressing park poor communities, and two, that the consultant will look for state, especially state bond measures for park investments.
Yeah. So, they will, and they did indicate that in the interview process as well. You know, what we likely know is that we don't have the right number of park, or the right acreage of parks for our current population. And as we start thinking about our future populations, I think we know that we don't have the right number. So, that will need to be part of this process as well, or will be part of this process.
Thank you. So, perhaps staff, I mean, I'm happy to approve the scope of work tonight, and I think we could just approve it, and also ask staff to make sure the scope of work actually includes all of the conversations you had with the provider so that we are getting the benefit of the bargain that they've committed to do. Because I very much would like to see the diversity, equity, inclusion, the sustainability, the inclusion of playgrounds, the demographic information of all users, and trying to look through those trends, you know, and the other, the other issues that I've raised, especially federal and state funding and bond funds. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'm really pleased that we're moving forward with this. There are a couple of things that I think are absolutely essential to success, and that's the outreach programs that we have to the community. The gold standard for outreach is actually a park, and that's the work that Rios Clemente did in outreach regarding the downtown park and the extent of interactions that occurred, and the focus of those interactions, which were not wide open, saying, tell us whatever you dream of. They were given practical options to consider which makes the most sense to you. And those kinds of focused conversations really made a difference in terms of being able to narrow down into what was pragmatic and what could actually be achieved, and what would get the support of the greatest number of people. The second area that, and I don't want to start singling out individuals, but in all of the years that I have been in Palm Springs, every, mostly Saturdays when driving to Costco, I see hundreds, if not thousands, of people in Dumuth Park playing soccer, parents and children. I've not heard one come before city council, and I think there are a variety of reasons why they have not. We do not have a dedicated soccer field anywhere in this community, and we have literally thousands upon thousands of families who are dedicated to that and have no regular place to go. And I suspect do not have someone they feel comfortable with in sitting down and explaining what they need. I will be definitely looking forward to seeing when this is over, that outreach to the community that is in Dumuth Park almost every single Saturday has been consulted with. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem.
Yep. Thank you, Yvonne. Just on two parts of it, on the procurement, I did want to mention, Councilmember Holstich, thank you for bringing that up. Our procurement director did have a local procurement fair last week. It was the first one, and all the different departments were there. And I think it's hopefully the first of a regular ones. And I know she is, we're already talking about doing a valley-wide one as well with the other cities. So, I don't think everybody quite knew that this, you know, there's a lot of interest in it. There's a lot more interest after the event when people heard about it. So, I hopefully, I think the next one will be very big. So, but I absolutely agree to understand the local market, and we have to keep working on that. And I, and I'm very excited this is moving forward. I do want to just sort of echo some of the other comments. When, you know, this is, this is a process where four public meetings can be great, but I know when they did the downtown park, there was, in addition to the public meetings, there was regular updates to them. There was, I think there was a task force that included Arts Commission and Measure J, and that might be an option. We had the presentation last week on Sunrise Park. So, we also have historic preservation in the Boys and Girls Club. Certainly, the schools should be included. We should make sure we reach out to our special needs community, and that was raised recently as well. And what I would, what I'd really like to see is that when we talk about, and I was going to raise this later, when we talk about the Sunrise Park celebration of parks in Palm Springs in 2025, that we have gone through this process, and like we did with the downtown park, we have a plan and a vision that everyone has participated in and feels that they can see the future. And I think maybe in 2025, that's really what we are, what the Sunrise Park celebration is about. Because we will have a lot of advancements. I know you're working on all kinds of things with Swim Center and our, and our recreation fields and pickleball. And I think that's the time to really say that this is transformational. We've been working on it. These are all the new things that we're going to see for our parks, and this is the vision of the shared community. Because this is one of those few projects that touches every single member of our community. And I think, and we saw this during, I saw this on Measure J, when the, when you heard from seniors who were saying it was their social activity, from the dog people, from people playing sports. And we see now in Victoria Park where there's no playground, like how much it means to the community and the schools. So, I think this, you know, I'm excited to do this. I'm going to suggest at the end of council that we maybe look at whether there's a regular council subcommittee, or we create a task force for the parks so that we don't come at the end of this master plan and, and wish that we had done something else, because we have one year to get this, get this right. So, thank you for, thank you for pulling this and for all the comments.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? All right. Well, thank you very much, Yvonne, for this.
Thank you.
You know, I'm very excited. I will say, I did not know that KDI didn't reach out to all council members. So, apologies for that. It was literally years ago that I talked to them. But I look forward to all of us seeing their, their work and their presentations because I was certainly impressed when I met with them as well. At this time, we can do a vote. It looks like we...
So, if I can, so I'll make a motion to approve and move staff recommendation, the approval of the service agreement with KDI. And then, I'd like to also include your suggestion, if we can, to create, would you like a council subcommittee, to form a task force with stakeholders?
I think it would be a combination, because I think we would, that way, we ensure the sustainability, Parks and Rec, Measure J, or, you know, is, is all involved. And it's the historic preservation, we're very interested in Sunrise Park. I think it would make sense. And make sure that we have different sectors of, of the community, like the, the group that was formed, I'm forgetting the name now, last week, that include mothers of young children.
Thank you. So, for staff, what would you like us?
The council can make a subcommittee. I remind the council that if you have non-council members on the subcommittee, then that subjects the committee to Brown Act requirements in terms of notices. If you want to have a subcommittee of the council and have that subcommittee invite stakeholders as, as participants, that would not be subject to the Brown Act. So, you might want to consider doing that if you, if you want to...
So, if we'd like to form a task force with two council members serving...
You can do that.
We can do that tonight in this motion. I very much would like to serve on that task force if I can. Your idea? That'd be great. So, that's included in my motion.
All right. Motion on the floor to approve staff recommendation for KDI with the addition of having a task force with the current members being Councilmember Holstich and Mayor Protem Bernstein. If we can have... Okay, so, do we have, this is the accurate, the motion is from Councilmember Holstich, a second, from Councilmember Dehart? Okay. Yes. Okay, the motion passes 4 to 0 with Councilmember Middleton, not in the room at the moment. But obviously, he made comments about being supportive. So, thank you very much. The next item will be Item 1T, approve amendment to the Consulting Services Agreement between the City of Palm Springs and the Coachella Valley Economic Partnership for the Palm Springs Innovation Hub and Accelerated Campus for a three-year period. If we can have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. This is a request to extend the agreement we have with the Coachella Valley Economic Partnership to operate the city's innovation hub. So, as you know, we recently amended the lease with CEVAP for operation of the innovation hub, the IHUB, at their headquarters offices across the street. That would help with the increasing costs that the operation has been experiencing. Plus, that also provides the city with additional space for city staff. We do have the CEO, Joe Wallace, here to give a presentation on CEVAP and the IHUB. And Joe, if you want to come down and speak with the council members. Thank you.
Big Button advances. All right, sounds good. Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, Mayor Protem, other members of the council. We've been doing this now for 12 years. We like it. As a matter of fact, we're always happy when we're dealing with our companies that we're trying to grow and help build and diversify the economy. And we're very glad to have you joining us in what's been our headquarters for a number of years. That even predates my time here, and we're looking forward to their smiling faces joining us. And so, what I'm going to talk about is just a bit about what some of the things that we do, because, you know, I think we don't talk as much as we did before COVID. So, it's just remind each other of why we're here and why it is we're going forward, and kind of what we do day-to-day to diversify the economy. CEVAP to the City of Palm Springs, we're reliable, unbelievably efficient. We're only six people now, and our budget is about one-fourth of what it was when I moved out 12 years ago. So, the reason that the original IHUBs were put with CEVAP were two. One is so we could be efficient, and another was so we could seek out other dollars. We're a 501(c)(3), so we're, banks will invest in us. They probably won't give you anything because they can't deduct it. So, we make life better for both the city and for ourselves by leveraging what we are. We have added geographic information services. You see our maps, and I'll show a few of them in a little bit here. But I know you used it to, to discuss about how much Palm Springs is dependent on workers coming from other parts of the Coachella Valley. And we're the ones that generated all that information. And we're always looking for more things to generate that give you more information to make good decisions moving forward. So, we do that, and it's a good, good thing to have. I'll talk a little about Riverside County Innovation Month, disaster preparedness. I think we're all pretty still wet with what went on with the tropical storm. We had an abundance of sandbags, and we didn't want to have them, but we got them because one of the companies that made them went under during COVID. So, we donated them to the cities. You guys got a bunch of them, and we just authorized your, the guy that gets the sandbags for you to come get four more pallets, so about $80,000 more. So, that'll, that will save you about $40,000 over the next several years. And we have them, that'll free up space. And so, I'll go through what we do, and just a little bit of a reminder on why we're here. We support government projects all across the valley. We do analysis with labor force data. We have a membership with ESRI. So, we have all of that data that they have in ESRI. And we've got a gentleman on staff that absolutely knows how to make those maps sing. We do age demographics, custom maps with respect to family size, family incomes. Those of you who were at the economic summit a few weeks ago, heard this data point that there's not one house in the Coachella Valley that's for sale that's affordable to the median family income. That's something we need to work on. And we try to work on it from the bottom up. What can we do to make jobs that pay more, to raise those family incomes so that they can have that American dream? You know, most of us that own homes, significant part of our wealth is in the equity of our homes. Even if we couldn't afford them today, we have those assets now. And we try to make that happen for, for many other people. And part of that's teaching them how to, how to get into that game and, and make it happen for themselves. We've done about 180 demographic reports for other nine prophets in the valley, other governments, and some for City of Palm Springs, and about 400 hours of data mining per year for, as a service to the people of and the governments of the Coachella Valley. Here's some of the maps. I think the one on the left is the one that talks about what cities have, how many do you have coming in from other places, and how many of your residences go to work in different cities than the ones that they live in. And this is valuable information in deciding traffic patterns, you know, what do you do whenever a road gets closed? I know you guys have a lot of recent experiences with that. And then, the other one is a, just another example of what we do. This is the density map of, of employment centers. And so, we've got the highest level of density is Palm Canyon Drive, no surprise to anyone. Second's El Paso. And knowing where people go to work helps with decisions, not only with traffic patterns, but with parking and things like that, too. Some of the things that we do for business services, and this is helping companies that are already here, not attracting entrepreneurs out of their garages or from the coast. We've gotten a lot of them off the coast. We do lunch and learns. One of the topics we talk about is the power of capital. We have a difficulty out here with capitalization of small businesses because there's no venture capitalist. And so, most of the money that's come into the IHUB has come either from the Bay Area or Dallas. For some reason, those two places like to invest here, and we like to see their money spent here. Money Matters, cash flow and digital marketing. We have a partnership, a new one, with the Women's Business Momentum Center, and we have meetings on one Saturday a month in the mornings. And it's all about women and the challenges that they have in business. And a lot of times, they're no different than men's challenges, but often, they're different. And we try to address that. And Laura, who is like my right-hand person, is the one who leads that. We're starting to, in '24, we're going to start Taco Tuesdays, try to get more and more people to come in, more people that learn what's going on in the business world, the more success they'll have. This is just a... This is just a cool picture of your guys coming over and getting the sandbags. I have another one with myself down in the firehouse across from Desert Oasis, helping them hand out some sandbags, too. So that, I think that was one of our better weekends. It was hard, but it was one of the better weekends. It's great to be able to jump in and do that. And you know, every time I see one of these, it makes me happy. Remember a couple of years ago, we've got $3 million worth of PPE? Blue Coyote asked me for some more a couple of weeks ago. I drove over and gave them four cases. So they're still being used, we're still dirty and we still need to clean our germs. And so we're still engaged with that. But I saw that and I thought, I know where that came from. Innovation Month, these are some of the entrepreneurs of the ones you see there. The guy on the left is, he's the CEO of Majukon. He's was an Israeli paratrooper. And he's taking a little time off right now to deal with some of the things that's going on. Because a lot of the members of his board of directors are generals in the Israeli Army, the Canadian Army and the United States Army. And they're getting ready to launch that business from this IHUB. I know some of you have seen it, but it's an invention that's going through the patenting process. And it really quickly provides shelter whenever an emergency comes up for shelter. And he was our winner of the fast pitch last year. In the two previous years, members of the Palm Springs IHUB also won the Riverside County Fast Pitch for this region. So you've won 100% of them with your IHUB. And we'd like to see another one this year. We had the Economic Summit. We were very excited that the state came to the Coachella Valley. Thank you for your sponsorship of our part of that summit. And it's the first time the state has been here. We merged our events with them because we didn't want to compete for sponsorships. And we worked very well with them. We actually liked them. And they're talking about having some of us speak at some of their events and them coming back for ours in the future. And for those of you who were lucky enough to attend, you got to hear Nicholas Badminton talk about the value of what I think Councilmember Holst had said, a 50-year plan. 50-year plans are transformational. One-year plans are survival. So that's something that we need to do as well, but that was a great thing on his part. We thank you for all of your annual support. Every year that I've been here, the City of Palm Springs has provided annual support. And that's what helps us pay for things that you really don't see. When I'm not in front of a business, when Laura's not in front of a business, somebody has to do the accounting. We start our audit Monday. That won't be my favorite thing of the year. But it's necessary. Grant writing brings in outside money. That's necessary. Compliance, that's necessary. All of these things happen with general support and support from situations where banks or other businesses support us. We launched Morning Insights this year. We've had over 200 people attend. 20% of the attendees are those people that moved here from mostly coastal California due to us having cheap houses and the ability to do telecommuting. So we've gotten a lot of people. If you saw my slide last week, we've gained 6,000 bachelor's degrees since COVID. So we lost population, but we gained 6,000 people with bachelor's degrees. And that's good for the future. Guest speakers have talked about population change, news, the state of entrepreneurship. We had Jocelyn, who spoke earlier, talk about the quagmire of cannabis businesses. Now, on to the IHUB. We have 14 companies right now in the Palm Springs IHUB. Five are in renewable energy. Hardware, which is usually electronics, hard goods and soft goods are six. Healthcare innovation, there's two. And a software company that's in education of children is, we have one company doing that. So that's the makeup of what we have either at the accelerator campus, across the street, or a few people that are still working in their homes, hoping to get across the street or someday in the accelerator campus. History, we have 14 in there now. We've had 48 program graduates. Of those, there's been 206 jobs directly created. And the algorithm that we get from ESRI says that that led to 808 indirect jobs. And from those, I'll say we have two real home runs. Sebecca, which is the company that invented the device that goes over your water meter that allows you to find where the leaks are. They're now providing their products to Caltrans, to the water districts. And they're out there, they're succeeding and they're still in the Coachella Valley. And then we have Poshel. They just graduated a couple of weeks ago. Poshel is now sponsoring a piece in the desert sun that is the athlete of the week because that's what they are. They're a software company that allows you to participate while you're watching athletics. They started out, they're friends of Tim Bradley. And it's like, if, those of you who like boxing, they grade it. And so you're sitting at home watching and you're playing with their app instead of screaming at the ref on television. And, you know, so that's how they started out. But they've gotten into a lot of different things that you can participate in. They graduated. They're in market rate places now. And, you know, they're participating and giving an award every week for the best high school athlete in the Coachella Valley. And I'm very proud to point out 79% of our IHUB companies are either women-led, veteran-led or minority-led. So we were embracing the whole DEI concept before Jay came over and asked us to do it. And we just amped it up. So we're on board with all of these things. Supplemental funding, on the left, you find some of the things that we applied for this year. And on the right, there's some that we have already gotten and received. So we're leveraging the dollars that you invest in us by using what we do to go find other investments from private businesses. Public relations, when I first came, there was one or two things a month. Last, you know, we've had 60 interviews, quotes, all of the media events, a million traditional impressions over the course of last year. And social media, we're active in Instagram, LinkedIn, Facebook, Twitter and YouTube. And we're not mean on any of them. So that's my presentation. Thank you. And thank you, Jeff, for pulling it so I could make this presentation to the council. And let's move on and make this a much wonderful place, more wonderful place than it already is.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Yes, thank you, Joe. I pulled it in large part because I wanted the council and public to hear the presentation. And I think, you know, we should try to get more regular updates because a lot of it is impressive and a lot of it I didn't know before I saw the presentation. And it would also be helpful to get more specifics about some of the companies like you mentioned tonight because I think those are interesting stories that, you know, we need to hear where this money is going with the IHUB. So thank you. That was mainly the reason I pulled it, was to get the presentation. I also just wanted to mention, we saw tonight, earlier tonight, we hired a new business administrator. Our city is looking at a chief economic development officer. There's a couple of other organizations out there. Visit Greater Palm Springs has a new economic development effort. The Caravan Seri Project had a project celebration recently in Palm Springs of some of the work. And what I'd love to do is see how to make sure that these different tools we have for economic development are really reaching different areas and focusing so that we're obviously not duplicating. I think we need a lot, a lot of economic development. And I think over time, we're starting to see that need a little bit more so that we're very, each one has, is working well together and they're additive and as opposed to being duplicative, which sometimes can happen. But I appreciate the work and I look forward to following what happens over the next year with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton.
Joe, thank you for the presentation. Most importantly, thank you for the work that you and your team have done over the years. And I'm very supportive of moving forward. I'd like to offer a couple of thoughts that are much longer term. One, that we need to find better ways to bring together all of the cities in the region to work cooperatively with you, most particularly when it comes to attracting businesses from outside our region to the region. And I think CEVAP is uniquely qualified to be able to help all of us be an advocate together. The kind of work that you do, while each one of us on, each individual council is intimately concerned with what's happening in our city. This is one of those areas where growth in the region is going to help all of us. And so I invite you to take and look at new initiatives, working with economic officers in different cities, working with city managers, and potentially consulting with CEVAG in terms of ways to find that we can help attract businesses from outside our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we have a motion and a second if there's no other comments? Yours is not working? Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember DeHart and I seconded. If we can have a vote. Oh, it looks like we're still having trouble with this. If we can have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Holst?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton? Mayor Protem Bernstein? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. The next item on the agenda is item 3A, request to amend chapter 6.15 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code relating to mobile food vending vehicle regulations. May we have a staff report, please?
Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of council, while we are waiting for the PowerPoint to come up, and if I could have the clicker, just by way of background, we've had two discussions about mobile food trucks in the past. We had an initial discussion back in March as part of our discussion about sidewalk vending. And then we brought forward a draft ordinance to you in July to get your input and your feedback on that. At the July City Council meeting, there were a number of recommendations that you all presented to us. And with that, what I would like to do is to go through those recommendations and talk a little bit about how we have addressed those. And so I'll go ahead and start off. In July, we talked about the current prohibition against food trucks in the downtown area. There is a legal concern with the language of that requirement. So as an alternative, what we discussed was the idea of prohibiting food trucks within 200 feet of restaurants as a means to address crowding issues. And so that's what we have proposed before you this evening, to replace the existing prohibition with a 200-foot separation distance. We also discussed certain parking restrictions that may be helpful in the administration of this. Number one is relative to food trucks parking in diagonal on-street spaces. Just because functional reasons, it's not easy for patrons to access the window in the food truck from a diagonal space. Also, we discussed that they may not park longer than two hours in an on-street parking space. So they'd be able to stay there for two hours and then would need to move on. And then finally, that food trucks should not occupy more than one on-street parking space. So if it's a longer vehicle, for example, there are some situations where it is a truck pulling a trailer. They would need to either be on private property or in a situation where they're not taking up more than one parking space. And so those are some additional things that we have added relative to the parking of mobile food trucks. In terms of the hours of operation, I believe we discussed having a similar standard as we have for sidewalk vendors in commercial and industrial districts. We also talked about parks. There was a concern that because parks are close to residential areas, that we needed to look at a different standard. What we would propose to you this evening is that we use the same language as sidewalk vendors. So in parks, mobile food trucks would need to cease operations one hour prior to the close of the park. Just by point of reference, most of our parks close at 10:00 p.m. And so food trucks would need to wrap up operations at 9:00 p.m. Speaking of operating in parks, as the ordinance currently stands, food trucks are prohibited in parks. Based on the direction that we've received from council, we've removed that prohibition. One of the things that we would like to do, however, is that food trucks must obtain written approval from the Director of Parks and Recreation to be in a park. The reason that we want to include that is that we do have a couple of parks where we have concessionaires. The schedule for those concessionaires is irregular. And so it may be appropriate that food trucks could operate when the concessionaire isn't operating. And so for that reason, we want to offer some flexibility to the food truck operators. And the best way to do that is to have our Parks and Recreation Department sign off on the licenses for operating in public parks. In addition, there was a concern about food trucks parking on grass. And so what was supposed to be in the version that you have in your packets, but unfortunately didn't make it, is there is a restriction that they do need to be on a paved parking surface unless otherwise approved by the Director of Parks and Recreation. There are other modifications that were discussed at the meeting in July. We talked a little bit about the streets where they're permitted. Staff had proposed raising that limit to 40 miles per hour, meaning that food trucks could be on any street where the speed limit was 40 miles per hour or less. Based on your feedback, we have dropped that back down to 35 miles per hour. We also discussed the fact that food trucks should comply with our foodware ordinance. So we've added that language. And then there was a discussion about schools. We currently have a prohibition against being 500 feet from any school. We've added the language that that only applies during school hours. So after school hours, they would be able to be within 500 feet. Just as a reminder, I want to bring to your attention some of the exemptions that we currently have in the ordinance. We're not proposing to make any changes here. But just as a reminder, food trucks are allowed to service construction sites. They are exempt from the standards that we otherwise have. Food trucks may service businesses and residences in the instance of residence where the property owner is having a party or a function and they have pre-ordered either catering or services from the food truck. That's an instance where food trucks would be allowed in residential zones. Also, it's not uncommon for businesses to have a food truck as part of an event. And so that would be permissible as well. Speaking about schools, food trucks are allowed on school property where they have the approval of the school administration to do so. So for example, in the instance of Palm Springs High School, the principal of the school could invite food trucks to the property by their permission and that would be exempt from our ordinance. And then finally, food trucks are allowed as part of a temporary special event. We did add some clarifying language to make sure that that was clear and permissible as part of temporary events. We've also had some questions and comments about the proposed draft ordinance since publication. One of the questions that has come up is relative to ice cream trucks operating in residential neighborhoods. What I would suggest is that we could add some language that they would be exempt from that restriction in residential neighborhoods and would be able to operate there as they often customarily do. We've also had some questions about vehicle height limitation for food trucks. They tend to be taller than most other vehicles. There's a concern about visibility. Our city attorney, Mr. Ballinger, has done some research on that. And so we can discuss that this evening if that's something that you'd like to pursue. We also had a question about whether there should be separation distance requirements from Village Fest, if they aren't part of Village Fest, from other special events or farmers' markets. So certainly that's something that we could look at. There was a question about whether or not they would be permitted to do dining tables and chairs and canopies. And so that's something that we might also look at as a possible restriction, just as we do for sidewalk vendors. And then there was another question about whether or not they would be able to hook up to electrical in the public right-of-way or discharge water or have lighting, those types of things, which we've addressed in our sidewalk vending ordinance. So that might be something that might be relevant that we would want to add. So that might be something that might be relevant that we would want to add. So these are some additional considerations above and beyond the direction that you all provided to us back in July. With that, that concludes my presentation, and we are more than happy to take your questions and your direction on this proposed draft ordinance.
Thank you very much. Do we have comments or questions from council at this time? Mayor Protem?
First. Okay, a couple of these I've brought up before. For the business license data on page eight, we've talked about this before, about trying to get a more robust database of our businesses. And one of the things I brought up is that there should be a contact information for who's ever on the truck themselves. If there's an issue, it seems that you don't want to be tracking the owner and then not being able to deal with whatever the issue is, which also may just be warning them of something if there's a road closure or something. I also wanted to be clarified, on page 12, it says, I think there was a language about staying on the lot for only up to 30 minutes, and I -- customers may only remain on the lot for up to 30 minutes after receiving their food. So if they're on a -- by a street, that doesn't -- by a sidewalk, that doesn't quite make sense, because people can hang out on the sidewalk. And if they're in the park, people could hang out there, too. So I'm not sure what that is. Where is the loitering relevant?
It would be in the vicinity of the food truck, and so I think that would be a point of clarification that would be helpful.
Okay, yeah. I mean, if they're on a -- if it's a downtown sidewalk, people can hang out there or a park. So I'm not sure how to make that correct or what the really concern is, but I would look at that.
Okay.
I have a question on -- they can be in private lots in residential areas with a valid land use permit. So does that mean somebody with a private lot could have -- just put a food truck there to serve the general public?
Not in residential zones. In residential zones, they have to be at a private residence at the request of the resident, and their service there can only be for that function. They can't sell to the general public. In commercial and industrial districts, they could be on private property. Typically, what we would do is require either a land use permit or be part of a temporary special event permit, and in that instance, they could sell to the general public, but that would be restricted to commercial and industrial districts.
Okay. We might want to clarify that they can't serve the public, and I sent you a picture of the one that was on Indian Canyon last night. It was on a private lot, but it was a full restaurant set up with lots of lights and chairs and tables and loud music, and so it was in a residential area.
And code compliance has verified that they do not have a license, and so we are pursuing that one.
Okay. But the point being, it was a private lot, so if they did everything else properly, the private lot still abuts the sidewalk in a residential area, so we don't want them serving the public.
Correct. And they -- we wouldn't grant a land use permit.
Well, it's a private lot in an area that's not a commercial. Is it? Okay. It might be commercial, but it's still -- you could have a private lot in a commercial -- in a residential area, and you wouldn't want to allow that. So that's -- the clarification would be, if they're on a private lot in a residential area, it's for use of the property owner, not for the public.
Correct.
That was my point. I asked -- the 200-feet distance is a radius, just a clarification.
Correct.
Okay. On page 14, it says, "No person shall back up a mobile food vending vehicle to make or attempt to sail." That means they can't be -- I mean, they just can't go backwards, or it's a little odd how it reads.
What that was intended to do, not having been the individual who drafted the ordinance back in 2015, but I believe what they were intending to do is food trucks can't go against the flow of traffic. So for example, if they're on a one-way street, they can't back up to make a sale. They can only move forward with the direction of traffic to pull over and make a sale. So that's what that is intended to address.
Okay. It was -- it probably needs to say that, it was a little confusing to me just in reading it. I understand the purpose. I also just -- the Riverside County Health Department, they require them to have a bathroom if they're staying for more than an hour in any location within 200 feet?
They require them to have access to a restroom, correct.
Okay. So there's nothing in hours that changes that, because they can park on our street for two hours, but if they are going to park for two -- over an hour, they have to have a bathroom, they can --
They have to have access, yes.
-- restroom. Okay. I also, this is a little bit -- I mean, and just to be clear, I'm glad that we're clarifying this, and I think there's a lot of places that could really use food trucks, like my office park, for instance. So -- but anyway, they can't stay in one space for more than two hours, and we've seen this downtown with people parking where they just move up half a block. Is there any way to control that, that they're basically staying on the same block all day?
I'm not sure if there's a good way to do that. We have to be mindful that we have to have the ability to enforce this. Let me give that some additional thought.
Okay. I mean, it would seem like an odd thing to do, but it's odd when people park their car on Palm Canyon and move it forward 50 feet. I do think we should have the separation from places like Village Fest or other special events. You know, we've seen, I know with Pride, for example, there's designated rideshare places that they're trying to keep close to the event, and we wouldn't want to block any kind of access to that. Certainly, the same -- I think the same -- we should put them on the same rules as we did with a lot of sidewalk vendors. If you start to have places where there's too high congestion, if people are leaving Festival of Lights, for instance, it could be difficult to navigate, because they're going to have a crowd of customers supposedly. There was a couple of things which I think I mentioned to you that would be kind of self-regulated, that they wouldn't park on a street in front of a bike rack or a bench. I don't know if we want to be more specific in that. It's kind of be crowded for the customers to do, but we don't want to be in a situation where we've blocked access to one of those things. And if I think if we take the same language that's in the street vending, it's probably Somebody asked me an odd question. If the driver's handicapped, can they park in the handicap space and operate their business?
That's a good question. Mr. Ballinger, do you have any thoughts on that?
I believe so. We can look at the California Vehicle Code, but I believe they would.
Okay. Thank you. And I do support the no dining tables, chairs, and fences and furniture, because if we're not allowing that for street vendors, we shouldn't really have it for food trucks. And generally, they don't have it, so it's not really an issue. And we've covered -- they have the same regulations as music and lights that any other one -- anyone else would have. And I just wanted to raise something, and I spoke to LP and our sustainability, and I think this is something we should look at over time, because there are starting to have electric generators, but from what I've read, a single ice cream truck with a diesel generator can emit -- can emit the equivalent of 83 pounds of coal a day and a lot of CO2. And I don't mean to stop them, I just meant the city should look at ways that maybe we could help with better things between carbon monoxide, nitrous oxide, particle matter. A lot of vehicles have this problem, and we're, you know, we should try and see what we can do, because these do exist for a very small number of people, a very small number of people have used them. And those are really my main questions on sustainability. I do think as we do this, we should really look at food truck parks or events. I think, you know, we're coming up with regulations to say all these things to control, and I'm really just -- I really -- I like food trucks in a lot of areas, and I really wish our parks would have a food truck events. I think it would be great, and if we can figure out another event space where there's a food truck event, I think that would be great, not just in a downtown, but throughout different parts of the city to help -- to help those areas, a lot of areas where there may not be as many restaurants or where it may be harder to travel. So I think we should really look at that as our -- part of our business outreach to do that. So those are really my comments and questions.
Mayor Protem, if I can just respond to that.
Sorry.
And I'm glad that you brought that up, because we just held a meeting of our sidewalk vendor working group, who are looking at sidewalk vending zones, and as part of that, they are also looking at special events that would involve both sidewalk vendors and mobile food trucks. So the team is working on that, and we hope to be able to come back to you after the first of the year with some proposals to look at.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you. Thank you for all those questions. Really appreciate all your work on that. You raised some of my questions, too. I'm really excited. Thank you to staff for working on the -- already working on the food truck parks and events. I completely agree. I think that's the economic development and, you know, revitalization and activation we want to see throughout the city. Some of this started because I had been working with an organization, Coachella Food Truck Park, who had done really successful events. Eric Besseril is now doing that for the city of Desert Hot Springs in their Friday Night on Pearson, but we couldn't do it as the city, because it wasn't allowed by our ordinance to do it in the park even. So I'm glad we're fixing that issue, and we will be able to do fun, family-friendly, you know, fun events that are affordable for the community with this ordinance. I agree with most of the points that you raised. I was trying to keep notes of them all, but agree about tables and chairs and, you know, what you listed and what staff has listed here. Obviously, we can't -- we can't limit ice cream trucks, nor would we want to. It's very much part of the American experience. It's important for folks. I agree about the distant separation for Village Fest and special events and farmers markets, too, and utility connections and lighting. And thanks for raising that issue of generators. I think that's really interesting. I've actually experienced that myself, just with Village Fest, when you're trying to eat around the eating area, sometimes it's full, and then you're like breathing and inhaling the gas fumes. It's something we should address for sustainability of that event. And yeah, that's obviously a concern for us, since we're concerned about our output and pollution here. Go ahead.
I think that's where we should also look, is that -- because they are really fun, but they do generate sometimes noise and exhaust, and so we should look at where they're located so that, you know, if they're in a park, they're not right next to a quiet meditation class, or if in a business where they're not, you know, if they're downtown or wherever, they're not emitting exhaust into another business would be kind of not very pleasant. So I think we should look at that. I don't know how to do it, but thank you for letting me interrupt.
Of course. I agree with you on lights. I actually noted that, too. The place on Indian, I drove in the other night very late, and it was like, it's very, very dark there, and then it's very, very bright lights, and so I added it to my mental list of things we might need to regulate, since we probably wouldn't allow that, and it can be distracting near a big intersection, and just for safety, driver's safety. Okay, I do have some quick questions. So I know we did one hour to close, one hour before close for the parks. So you can just -- I know we did that for sidewalk vending. Can you just explain that a little bit? So the parks close at sunset. I think you said this in the presentation. Is that right, or certain times?
No, generally, they close at 10:00 p.m.
That's what you said, 10:00. So it goes essentially till 9:00 p.m.
Correct.
And then if -- when we implement this, if there's support from council, do you think that you'll create like an info sheet? Because I would love to see like basic information, like a map of where they can go, you know, where are -- we don't even know which are residential and commercial, and sort of like just basic information for the public about locations and the actual hour, so we could just say 9:00 p.m., you know, unless otherwise stated, instead of vague things that don't actually inform folks like that. The foodware ordinance, I really like the idea of including that. I'm trying to figure out how that works in practice in terms of like to-go food, so they would essentially have the same standards as rest -- as food without kitchens and those standards that we have. So we think that's pretty practical for them.
I believe so. What we will probably do is have Ms. McCloy take a closer look at the specific operations of mobile food trucks, see if there's any areas that may be problematic, so that when we come back to you, we'll just verify that indeed we can implement that as we intend.
That'd be great, and that's my main feedback, is we need to include and really do outreach to food truck vendors. Obviously, there's not many operating in Palm Springs, because they're essentially not quite allowed here, but maybe we will get some, and maybe we'll be able to work with them to make sure that that's practical. So food trucks are permitted on private property upon an approval of a land use permit. Is that a one-time permit for one use, or is it ongoing?
No, it could be ongoing. And so, much like sidewalk vendors, having them on private property has some benefits, we believe, in terms of public safety, crowding, things like that. And so just like the sidewalk vendors, we would offer the reduced cost of the land use permit to encourage that type of use.
Great, thank you. And I like mimicking those rules, since it just makes sense that this is similar businesses. It says, "Application for mobile food vendor permit." Do you know the amount of that permit?
It is just a standard business license. We use the term permit in the ordinance, but what it really means is a business license, and so it's the standard cost of a business license.
Great, thank you. And then you said that written approval for -- from Parks and Rec Director, is that -- and I think you said that's for the license itself, to give out the license?
Correct.
Okay. So staff will handle that?
Yep.
That seems like it won't be a big barrier. There's number 11 on page nine, which says, "All criminal convictions of the principal's operators' drivers, excluding minor traffic offenses, except for felonies, stating the date, place, nature, and sentence of such conviction." So that's going to be required for an application, but it doesn't quite say what will be barred or what it will be used for. Like are there -- obviously, we care about, you know, criminal justice and ensuring people have access to jobs, and we might not want to bar each and every possible conviction if it's unrelated to operating a business. I'm sure there's business owners here who have similar types of convictions. So is that just our general language that we do for a business license, or is it different because it's food trucks? And would we want to limit it to more relevant convictions or code sections instead of like -- is it a blanket prohibition, or are we just considering that information? And what are we doing with it?
Mr.?
So we might want to clarify the ordinance to state, I probably wouldn't want to collect all of that information. I would probably want to limit it where it's relevant to operating a business, so, you know, things with convictions with minors, et cetera, driving, you know, things that might be relevant to the business, and then say what we do with it more specifically, like if people are barred.
Yeah, Councilmember Hostage, you're absolutely right. We do want to be specific. You'll notice in section 615.070A5, we have a list of five violations that would result in the denial of the permit.
Yeah.
So some controlled substance violations, indecent exposure, lottery tickets, gambling, pool selling, bookmaking, and distribution of harmful or obscene matter. So that -- those are identified. It's a -- there is a broader category of crimes of moral turpitude. If you'd like to give us direction to kind of tighten up that language, we certainly can.
So we're going to collect, we're saying, please let us know of any convictions you've ever had, and then we're saying we will not issue one if you set those, if you meet those criteria. So wouldn't we just want to collect the information for those criteria? Or are you trying to see, take, cast a broad net?
Again, we don't have necessarily the benefit of having drafted this language. A lot of this language is existing language.
Form.
Yeah. That which is not redlined in here is what we've got existing. So it was, you know, drafted a decade or so ago. There are different approaches. I'll note that one of the categories is a crime of moral turpitude, and if you read the Daily Register, almost every other day, there's a new court case defining what is or is not a crime of moral turpitude, so it's -- it's an ongoing issue. So if the council, again, wants to narrow this definition and direct us to narrow that, we can. Or ask us just to ask applicants for evidence of violations of specific code sections that we could deny the permit based on.
I think I'll ask my council colleagues, but I think, I love staff recommendation, but it might just be good policy to just ask for the convictions of the things we're going to bar from and not ask for every conviction. I don't even think that has a time limit. You probably don't want to ask people for all convictions ever. So just take a look at that. Litter control, it says we're requiring two-gallon litter receptacles, but it doesn't talk about recycling receptacles. And so I was wondering if we're also requiring recycling, and if we should? And that's my last question. And I did it, and it really is. So is the answer that it doesn't require recycling and it only requires trash receptacles, or is it meant to include both?
It just says trash receptacles, so we may want to clarify that point.
I would clarify that. And we should maybe think about green waste and the state laws about, I assume a lot of this clutter is going to, glitter is going to end up in our city trash cans, not in theirs or in our recycling. But I'd love to at least see a minimum recycling included. That's it, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Ballinger, the advice that we received is that we cannot place a prohibition on downtown in having food trucks located in the downtown. Can you elaborate on that for me? Because I certainly do not see them in most downtowns. And in places where I have visited where there are food trucks, they are clearly not on surface streets where there are large numbers of restaurants, narrower streets, and have been restricted to what appear to have been restricted to streets that are large enough to easily accommodate the food trucks. And the food trucks are, appear to have been designated to specific areas so that those who want to frequent the food trucks certainly have the access to go there. But they are not on top of existing businesses.
Sure, it's a fair question. The basis of my statement that we cannot prohibit food trucks within the downtown area is actually a California Vehicle Code section that states that cities are able to regulate the location of food trucks within the city, but that has been interpreted by one court of appeal to mean that we cannot prohibit them within a district, but we can regulate them. So if we wanted to say they're allowed there during certain hours, we can do that. If we wanted to say they're allowed on certain-sized streets, whether it's arterial but not collector's streets, we can regulate them, but we can't flat-out ban them in a particular district.
So in some instances, we've used a 500-foot separation and in others, a 200-foot separation. Is there a legal foundation for why one is valid in one area and the other is not valid in another area? As example, we've said 200 feet from restaurants, but 500 feet from schools. Could we say 500 feet from schools and restaurants?
The 200-foot distance was actually taken from a Chicago ordinance that was upheld by a court in a challenge to that case. And so that's the basis for including 200 feet. And the idea there is that the legislative purpose for having that distance requirement is to avoid congestion and overcrowding that is likely to occur outside of a restaurant. I suppose if we could make those same findings for 500 feet, it would be defensible. I think we included 200 because that has actually been tested by a court and was upheld by a court. So it's a little bit safer from a legal perspective.
Right. Given the level of congestion on Palm Canyon and Indian Canyon, most nights, but particularly most weakened evenings, is there not a argument that we already have a congestion issue there? Or what is the legal standard as to what is a acceptable or unacceptable level of congestion?
The council definitely would have an argument that 500 feet is defensible. And generally, courts will give deference to a legislative body such as yourself if you determine that there is already significant congestion and that adding food trucks to that mix would create an unreasonable amount of congestion.
I think those are my questions. I have a couple of comments.
Thank you. Councilmember DeHart.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate staff's work on absorbing all the notes we had previously and combining things. I think you did a good job capturing what we were talking about at the time. Isn't it true that food trucks really aren't banned? We could have a food truck event any day we wanted to, if got approval, right?
Generally, there are, as Councilmember Holstidge just pointed out, they are prohibited in parks. But we do allow them as part of temporary special events.
Yeah. So we could have always, always had food truck events.
Yeah.
Only with a special permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, right. But like, if you're an operator, it's pretty limited where you could operate in a city of Palm Springs.
But as an event.
Events, yes.
Okay.
With a permit.
So I think if we have to compromise on the diameter, 400 feet would be the minimum that I think would be acceptable. 200 feet, I just don't think is enough, if we're talking diameter. What's that?
I think it's radius, right?
Radius, sorry. Radius. Thank you. And so I was glad to hear that this word, permit, didn't just confuse me, it confused other council members. Can we just say license or permit slash license, or in the definitions, define what a permit is?
That's a good point. I think my preference is, let's just go ahead and call it a business license.
Okay, perfect.
And keep it simple.
And that totally clarifies it. I think in the permit issuance, 615.070, I think paragraph five should be eliminated altogether. Are there?
Let's see, I'm sorry, could you repeat that reference?
The moral turpitude.
Oh, okay.
People with prior convictions of controlled substance. We're not asking restaurant owners for this information, and we're not preventing them from doing business. We're not asking our street vendors for this information, but we're letting them roam our town. So I don't think, I just don't feel it's right for us to collect it. And so I would favor not including that paragraph because we don't ask other businesses to do that. So you had suggested adding no parking on grass. Where would that go?
It would go under the section about, let me find it just a moment. On page 13.
Yeah.
Under I, City Parks, at the top of the page, we would add that at the very end of that sentence, that paragraph.
Page five?
Page nine.
Oh, nine.
Page nine of the ordinance or page 13 of the overall package. Sorry. That gets confusing.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so it's going to go there. And then what, if we have an ice cream truck, what percentage of product needs to be ice cream to be classified as an ice cream truck?
You know, I heard a reference earlier to ice cream trucks. This chapter does not address ice cream trucks. It, again, it does so in a very weird way, but it defines food trucks by reference to the county's ordinance. The county's, but then it exempts from the county's definition, ice cream trucks. So ice cream, the push cart, ice cream carts are not covered by this ordinance.
No, like ice cream ding, 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 going through your neighborhood.
With the fun music.
That would be, that would be a food truck, wouldn't it?
Yes.
So how do we determine that it's an ice cream truck?
I believe environmental health has a specific permit for ice cream trucks that may be different than the standard mobile food truck. We can verify that to make sure that as we set out that exemption, that we're using the definition that environmental health is in terms of distinguishing ice cream trucks.
Yeah, okay. Because we want to, we want to allow them, right? Isn't that what I heard? We do want to allow, okay. But we don't want a burrito food truck that sells six ice cream selections out of 30 menu items.
I want that.
To call themselves an ice cream truck.
That's great.
Okay, all right. And I fully agree. I don't, you mentioned this, that was an item that we didn't include. But that is this, I think the same language that we included in the sidewalk vendors, that they should not be able to access public utilities. I think if we're doing it for sidewalk vendors, we're not letting them access that infrastructure. Certainly, a commercial food truck should not be able to access it. We got the radius. So if it's a radius of 400 feet or 500 feet, I'm okay with either one, but that was it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Holstidge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I think it matters, just like, I'm trying to think through, a map would be helpful, like 500 feet of a restaurant on Palm Canyon, Indian Canyon. Do you know how long our blocks are?
Our blocks vary, but generally, they're about 400 to 500 feet. So as we think about 200 feet, that's about half a block. So thinking of a radius in either direction from the entrance of the restaurant. As you go 500 feet, that's about the length of a block itself. So thinking of a 500-foot radius from the entrance of a restaurant would basically cover two blocks.
What do you mean radius from? Oh, you're saying on a bird's eye map?
Yes.
So it's not practically, like, are you in front of a restaurant? Which you might think if you're, justification is pedestrian, that it might not be a bird's eye radius because you might not have people gathering for a restaurant behind it, on the block behind. So I see. So that's different than often we do it. We often do like 200 feet from the entrance, right? When we're doing like separation, I mean, the cannabis separation is bird's eye like that, too. But anyway, so my point is, in Palm Springs, right, thinking through, like, if we're, have some legal liability to prohibit downtown, is 500, 400 feet going to limit essentially most of that business, downtown business corridor because we have a restaurant at least on every block, if not more?
Yes, I believe in certain places on Palm Canyon, Indian Canyon, it would, because we do have a rather high concentration of restaurants. But there would be pockets outside of certain areas where food trucks could be located.
Sounds like a very complicated math problem for food truck vendors to know where to operate. And I'm having a hard time as a policymaker knowing what's the difference between 200 and 400, just like practically where they can go. If 200 is about half a block, we still have a few restaurants per block. So is this essentially limiting that business corridor, part of Palm Canyon at least?
Yeah. And it is, to be quite honest. And that's why 200 feet versus 500 feet, 200 feet is going to be fairly effective in terms of the concerns about congestion, just considering how many restaurants we have and their proximity to one another.
Do we still have legal liability for economic protectionism? Is that still a risk for this ordinance, or was that just for street vendor issues? Remember, we weren't allowed to consider protecting restaurants or other types of businesses. Obviously, we want to, and I am very concerned about congestion and safety and pedestrian safety. You know, we talked about this with Bird scooters, like the problem downtown in those highly congested areas. So I do share those concerns. But do we risk liability if it's 500 feet and then essentially doesn't allow downtown in the way that we think of it?
We do run the risk of potential liability if the council is acting purely based on economic competition reasons. And that was kind of one of the challenges to the Chicago ordinance that our language is based on. And that's why, rather than relying on economic competition, this ordinance is based on congestion and that distance, again, that was taken from the Chicago ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember, sorry, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Holstidge, and also to the others who've had questions about separation distance, the next time we bring this back to you, what we would like to do is do a map showing the illustration of 200 feet. We can also do a map for you showing an illustration of 400 feet or 500 feet, whichever you'd prefer. So that way, it would be very clear in terms of what the impact of that would be.
That'd be great. And I think that'd be really great for the public to know where, what that means. Thank you.
Thank you. That was in my, in my map, in my notes. Let's see a map. But 200-feet radius is essentially limits them from being downtown at all because of the concentration of restaurants throughout our downtown corridor. So that map would be helpful, but I think you're right. I think it would be maybe one, two pockets at most, and it would really just be at the ends, very, very ends of Palm Canyon and Indian Canyon. So in terms of the convictions, I agree with my colleagues about that. It doesn't make sense to me why we would need to collect that data. So unless, unless you find a particular reason that we need that, I don't, I don't see the point. And I know that even our chief of police has mentioned how important it is for people to be able to have jobs because the recidivism rates can be much higher if people can't access jobs and housing after they've been released from prison. So we do want to be mindful of things like that. We don't want people to be prevented from working, especially not on our, on our account.
I have a question, Flynn, regarding the parks concessions. I'm still a little bit confused by this because I know that at Demuth Park, we have a concessionaire that comes during Little League season. And at Sunrise Park, we have concessions inside the stadium, but that's only after you purchase a ticket. So where's the other concessions that are occurring?
Those are the two primary parks where we have concession agreements currently in place.
Okay, so I, that's where I'm a little bit confused because, one, you can't bring in outside food into the stadium. So even if there was a food truck outside, you're not allowed to bring it in. You can't go see the game. But again, if it's not allowed during the game, that's fine. But Sunrise Park is so large. So they could easily, why not have them be allowed on the other side of the park? And the same with Demuth Park. Demuth Park's our largest park. I don't see the issue with them being near the animal shelter when there's a Little League game going on all the way over there. You're not like, it's just not feasible. People are, I think, the number of people who might leave the Little League game and go all the way to the other side is maybe one. And at that point, are we really doing anything? But it seems more like we're making it harder for the food trucks to know where they can operate and when they can operate. And it just seems more cumbersome than it's, than is necessary.
Based on your prior input, what we didn't want to do is prohibit them in parks where we have a concession agreement. Because for the reasons that you've just stated, Demuth Park is large. And as you say, there would be appropriate places to have food trucks that are distant from the concessionaires, that you're not going to be impacting their business or the terms of our agreement with the concessionaire. And so for that reason, I don't know if there's a better way to do this. We wanted to look at it on a case-by-case basis. And that's why we want the Director of Parks and Recreation to sign off so that they could have opportunities to be in Sunrise Park and Demuth Park, just in a different location or during different hours of operation. Park and Demuth Park, just in a different location or during different hours of operation.
So, I'm, I'm fine with that, but if we can just clarify that it's those two parks?
Okay.
Because I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead if you want to clarify.
I was just going to say, those concession agreements may change over the years, and so I don't know that I want to put that language in the ordinance itself.
We don't have, well, I mean, I guess with our Parks Master Plan, we could have concession spaces at, at any of the parks, but, but it seems, again, it just seems unduly burdensome to have to come and get a special approval from Parks and Rec to go to a park. Like, as it stands right now, we only have concessions at two parks.
Yeah.
And so, I'm just wondering, how do we make this more feasible and easy? Because otherwise, you're, it, it sounds like they would have to come in on a regular basis, maybe monthly, to say, hey, are there any special events happening, or can I, can I be at this park? And especially when it comes to the parks that don't have those concession agreements currently, which it will be many years down the road before any of our other parks do. Where, to me, where we're putting this restriction essentially limits anyone, essentially prevents food trucks from even going to the parks, because if I were a food truck operator, I'm not going to come to the city every, like, all the time, just to check in to make sure that no Little League game is happening. I mean, it just seems, I would rather just go park on a, in an area that I know wouldn't, I wouldn't have to deal with that burden.
One way that we might be able to do that is to have the Parks and Recreation Director prepare a map of each park showing the approved zones for mobile food trucks. That might be the way to kind of get around this idea of, we want to be mindful of our concession agreements while at the same time still encouraging food trucks in parks. So, rather than having to get the written approval, perhaps we have them produce a map showing approved locations where they may come and vend.
Thank you, yeah, I, I would be in, in big support of that. I think that just makes it easier for, for everybody, for staff, as well as the, the vendors, and for the public as well, because then we'll know where, where people may, may be vending at any given time. And, and again, for the public, I say this because we don't have any restaurants, very few, that are near parks. And so, it's nice, especially if you have children, to be able to have vendors nearby so that you can grab a snack, or, it's not, like, for instance, when the, the palateros come through the parks, it's always like, oh, great, have a little bit of relief from the sun, or whatever it is. So, I appreciate that, I think it would make it easier. And as we've seen, we actually have a vendor right now that's been in our parks, and I don't know if it's considered a food truck or not. Is there, are they considered a street vendor, the charcuterie place? Okay, interesting. Yeah, I, I thought it was, I thought it was a, a truck. I haven't been by. Thank you for that clarification. It's a cart, okay. Those are, those were, that was really all that I, I had to say. I am supportive of allowing food trucks in Palm Springs. I know we got some emails from people who want to see that. It's just another option, it's fun. Again, it activates our, our park spaces, which we want, and especially with our Parks Master Plan coming, we want to start getting people out into these spaces more. We want to be able to see how they're utilizing the spaces, and does this help to have food available near our parks? Does this make a difference? Because that might be how we decide to have more concessionaires at our, at our parks full-time, and not as many food trucks in the future because, because of that. So, I really appreciate the work that you're doing on this and, and incorporating all of the different comments that we've heard. And I know that Councilwoman Middleton has a comment, and Mayor Protam, did you also?
Yes.
Okay, so, Councilwoman Middleton, and then we'll go to Mayor Protam.
You know, I want to preface this, that each and every one of us on council puts our heart and soul into what we do here, and each one of us very equally believes that we're moving forward with what's best for our city. I'm as frustrated this evening as I've ever been on this council. I think we're making a serious mistake in the way that we're introducing these food trucks into our city. And rather than moving slowly and identifying areas where we can grow this amenity and make sure that it's available to individuals who want to use it, we are jumping in with both feet as quickly as we can, as broadly as we can. But beyond that, my frustration comes back to some of the economic protection arguments. As a member of a city council with a downtown area that has been rebuilt over the last 13 years to be the envy of this region, I am told that I need to be silent when it comes to trying to protect what has been built in this city, and silent in defense of the people who worked with us each and every day over the last many decades to rebuild this city into what it's become. And in the future, we are going to walk down Palm Canyon, and we will have engines blaring, throwing diesel out at the individuals walking down the street, noise coming from those engines that we would not permit for any other business, and they will not be attracting individuals to remain in our community. I will vote no, and I hope I am wrong.
Thank you. Mayor Protam.
Yep, thank you. I have a few other questions. So, some of the generators I've also heard can emit 55 to 90 decibels of noise. Is that in accordance with our, I don't know, I think our vacation rentals are lower than that.
The use of generators would be subject to the city's noise ordinance, and there is a different standard in residential districts than there is for commercial districts. And it also is graduated in terms of, later in the evening, the decibel limit goes down, so it's lower. But use of generators would be subject to the city's noise ordinance, depending on the district where the vehicle is located.
Okay, because I, I, and I mentioned this up before, like, if you're dealing with other businesses or other quiet areas that, you know, the noise and the diesel, we should figure out a way that they can't, they can't, you know, affect the quiet enjoyment, you know, of how another business or individuals operate, you know? It's, it's, it is something that we really have to look at. I mean, the idea is that they're serving food, but it is true, when you see them at some of the events, some of them are very loud and, and, and are spewing fumes, or there is a lot of fumes. They're not all like that, and if they're, if they're positioned right, nobody notices it. So, I think we have to figure that out. I also want to just point out something, that when they get their permit, they do have to tell what their location is, right?
Yes and no. Mobile food trucks, by their name, are mobile, so as long as they're complying with our regulations, they can be on the streets where permitted and the locations where permitted, and can go from location to location. If they have a land use permit on private property, then that land use permit is valid only for that location. So, it depends on how the food truck is operating and where it's located.
So, on 615050, C1, it says that each applicant for a permit to conduct business as a mobile food vendor shall furnish the following information. Number one is the present or proposed address from which the business is to be conducted. Doesn't that mean they have to say where they're going to be?
Yeah, and that kind of goes against what a mobile food truck is, so I'll take a look at that.
I mean, it might be helpful to know, and it would sort of help if they're going to have problems, you know, or if they're going to the park, to know where they can be. The other thing on parks is that I think maybe the grass thing might be with, they could get an exemption to be on the grass if there is an event, or if the Parks and Rec Director says it's okay.
Yes, we had proposed language, unfortunately, that didn't show up in your version, that unless otherwise approved by the city. So, there is an exemption to be on the grass for special events if approved by the Parks and Recreation Director.
Okay, and so, along those lines, we don't generally allow people to drive on the grass in the parks, right?
No.
So, I think that cart in Demuth, I think that's driven on there, is it?
You know, I don't know how they access their location there, but they did have approval from Parks and Recreation.
Okay, so they got approval?
Yes, they did.
Okay, fine. And I have seen other ones in Sun, in Francis Stevens, where there's cars on the grass, that's for a special event.
And they generally should not be on the grass there.
Okay.
We, we have concerns, obviously, about impacts to our irrigation equipment, that's the major concern.
Yeah, that's, so, it almost seems like somebody should be, if they're going to park on the grass, if they get the permit, someone has to direct them on how to not damage the irrigation. So, maybe that's how it is, whether, whether it's Francis Stevens or other ones, if that's what they're getting a permit to do, someone from staff has to be there to direct them how to get on and off the grass. Okay. And I just want to clarify something, because, to ask the city, city attorney, in the Chicago case, the 200-feet rule was, was allowed because it balances the interests of restaurants and food trucks, and it fosters restaurants, which I'm reading from your emails, sorry, and it fosters restaurants which provide important economic, cultural, and neighborhood benefits to the city, while at the same time allowing food trucks to prosper. So, is the key that, that you can help our local businesses, you just have to make sure you're not, you're not disallowing them from prospering. That? So, so, the point is that if they can prosper in Demuth Park, and our restaurants downtown could prosper, you're balancing the economic and cultural, and it actually really are the cultural to the benefits of communities, you want them to be in the parks, where there is no restaurant.
That was one of the two bases upon which the, the court relied. One was the congestion, the traffic and pedestrian congestion, the other was the balancing of the, of the two different types of businesses, yes.
So, the, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm just, I, so we can, if you're, if, so as long as there is places for them to prosper in the city, you can help, I don't know if the word is protect, you can take into account the interests of our existing businesses.
You can, I think we'd need, we'd want to get some evidence of how it's going to allow them to prosper in those other, other areas. In the case of, in the case of Chicago, they, they brought in testimony into, into the court case, and so, that's why we've, we've included both of those bases in this ordinance.
Okay, well, part of it may be really actively promoting if they're in the parks, because, I mean, it seems to me like that, or office parks, that we have them, you know, where there's nothing. So, that might be something to look at, just because, you know, there might be a way that really does foster both. And obviously, if, if it does start negatively affecting restaurants and blight and other economic things are, are a city interest.
I, I definitely think that, to the extent the council is opening up other opportunities in other areas of the city, including parks, then I think that goes, goes along with the rationale of that court case.
Okay, I don't really have a conclusion on this, but I, I just remember, so that is something we should look at in terms of the distance requirements, but it'll be helpful to see the map, because I don't really understand that either, where they would be allowed. So, it may be just a non-issue. Thank you, that was my comment.
Thank you. Councilmember DeHart.
Thank you, I forgot that I had one last item that I neglected to mention, but I, I do like the idea of opening parks, having a map so people can clearly know where in the park they can go, because I've, I've stood for that small concessionaire owner who has a contract with the city, and we cannot, we cannot, from this diocese, go and have a negative impact with that vendor, who we already have an agreement with. And a food truck is going to go where the business is. So, I think if we create a map that isn't going to harm our current vendor, I'm all in favor of that. I, I think since we're going to get a map of, and I wish it wasn't a 200-foot radius, I, I think it should be 200-foot linear, not radius, but I, I think if we're going to see that, then I'm, I'm not sure we understand the impact that a food truck is going to have in our downtown landscape. So, if we can have an illustration of what a 24-foot food truck would look like parked in front of our retail businesses downtown, and what that view is, and how much business is blocked, I think, I, I think our council would be shocked to see that one food truck in, in many places in our, with our retail businesses can block the entire storefront. And if they're going to allow to be there for two hours, we're not only changing the look and feel of downtown, we're blocking the visibility of the culture of our businesses downtown. So, I, I think if we could have an illustration of what a 24-foot food truck that's 13 feet high, however high it is, I think that will be an eye-opener for us to have a better understanding that we need to enforce a 200-foot minimum linear distance for that traffic and congestion, and just for the makeup and care, character of our downtown. And then, then the other thing, I think, if, if we're going to continue to go down a path and, and fight to have them downtown, which I'm not in favor of, I'm in favor of having them in side streets, I'm in favor of having them, you know, in corner areas where we aren't going to have an impact on congestion, and it's not going to be a traffic issue, I think we do need to look at a height limit. You know, if you, you have a food truck that is over seven feet high, they are clearly blocking the view of, of what's going, what is happening in that retail business behind them. So, I think, I, we, we had language, I don't, Jeff sent me, I got language from somewhere, I don't know where it was, but Hawaii, I think, is a, they have a limit on not to exceed 22 feet in length, or seven feet width and seven feet in height. Now, I don't have a, there's not an issue with the length, because we already have a one parking space, so we're okay there. It's, it's that height. And, and I can assure you, it is, it is hugely impacted, because this, I, I do this, we have lots of food vendors that participate in my events, and not only is the gas from the exhaust going into our downtown businesses, and it creates a problem and an issue, it blocks the storefront, and, and we've, many times have had to move them in events so that the exhaust that is coming out of the truck is not going into, into the restaurant that their, or business that they're parked in front of. So, you know, I think we should look at a height, a height challenge, that if it's over, you know, well, I think the standard limit right now is eight feet, that there's an eight-foot limit for Village Fest. The, the vendor booths are not to exceed eight feet, and that is an attempt to help keep visibility for the storefronts. So, maybe if we can see what an eight-foot tall truck that's 22 feet long, how it blocks storefronts downtown, that could be helpful for us.
All right, thank you very much. Staff, do you have the information that you need to move forward with a proposal?
No, we've taken notes on all of your comments, and we will go ahead and prepare some additional study materials, and we will bring this back to you at a later date.
Wait, so you, you, do you need more information from us?
No.
No, you don't need, okay.
No, we don't need more information.
Okay, you answered it the opposite of the way I said it. Okay, thank you. All right, no further information, information is needed from staff. If we can, do you need a, city attorney, do we need a vote on this?
I don't think so, we'll be bringing back an ordinance.
Because we'll be bringing it back, fantastic. So, with that, Councilmember Holstage, what's up?
Sorry, just to be clear, so, you, there are a lot of different views, people shared their concerns and questions. I think it sounded like you'll bring back a map. Are you going to bring back the same ordinance with the map? Like, essentially, is it still going to be a 200? I agree it should be a lineal, linear number, because then it might impact Indian, which we've really been trying, for example, to, you know, get more businesses and more pedestrians there. So, but are you going to bring back a similar framework in, in terms of the 200 feet, and, or are you going to bring this back with a map that's just descriptive, but it's going to be a similar ordinance?
What we'll bring back is maps, probably plural, because I think we'll want to look at. at 200 feet, see what that looks like, and then we may also want to examine 400 feet or 500 feet. I don't think that we can clearly pinpoint what the appropriate standard would be until we really look visually at a map, and I think that would be the most helpful. And then based on that, the next draft that you will see will be based on those maps. So it could be somewhere between 200 feet and 500 feet. We'll discuss with the city attorney and look at what would be appropriate.
And you'll look at radius versus linear and sort of, because I raised this with street vendors, too. Like, let's actually do it based on data of where we have congestion, right? And, you know, which areas would be opened up? And then we could look at the map and say, you know, this is really congested, we wouldn't want it in this area, right? And so then we might be more targeted, because I agree with the mayor, having just allowable locations might be a better way to do this. Is that what you said, Mayor?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure if the same thing is coming back, because then otherwise it doesn't quite make sense to just bump it and do nothing now. But that makes sense to me.
We're just incorporating all of the comments.
Incorporate the comments and bring back maps for options.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Yes, we'll be presenting, they'll be, staff will be presenting all of the different options that are available to us, so that we can have another robust discussion, but hopefully one that is not an hour long. At this time, we have one more item, and that is our item three B on cannabis. But we do have, councilmember Holstidge has to recuse herself on this issue, and it is the last item. So if we can just go ahead and just jump quickly to the city council and city manager requests for upcoming agenda development, I certainly wouldn't want to stay longer if I, so if we can do that quickly before we go to cannabis, and then we'll take a break.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, I don't know if the IT staff can call up our tentative upcoming meeting.
There, we've got it up on the screen.
There it is. You'll note, we just have two regularly scheduled meetings for the remainder of the year. At our next November 9th meeting, we'll have a couple of historic designation considerations for you to think about. We are bringing back the catalytic converter ordinance that you've asked about. We'll, some, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about what the formation of commercial districts might look like. We're going to be prepared to bring that back to you. In addition to our normal set of consent items, and then our final meeting, regular meeting of the year on December 14th, we are planning for a presentation by the College of the Desert to talk about some of the things that they've been thinking about and presenting to the community. Of course, we will be swearing in Mayor Pro Tem Bernstein as our new mayor for the coming year. We have a conformity report from the tribe on residential properties that will be presented. You will remember, we've had a proposal to extend the contract for Palm Springs Disposal Services, and we are tentatively working on an amendment to their proposal for your consideration. We have some appointments to make, and then at the last meeting, we had some discussion about the license plate readers and their use in HOAs. I recall that we talked about that. So we are working to come back and discuss that. And then finally, we know that the governor has rescinded those emergency meeting orders by January 1st, and the city attorney will be prepared to give us a brief update on what that means for the coming year. So that's what the next two meetings look like, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And will we have presentations at the next meeting?
We potentially may have one, there's been some request for a status update on some of the environmental impacts of the Sultan Sea, and what the status of that is. We may be in touch with them to have them give us a brief 10-minute presentation on that.
And then is Team Rubicon being rescheduled?
We'll have to get back with them and see what works for them, and when that's convenient for them, we'd certainly like to have them back.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Councilmember Holstidge.
Thank you. I just have a question on that. So Palm Springs Disposal has asked to amend their agreement. Didn't we just amend their agreement quite recently?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite say that right. They've asked for their existing contract to be extended in return for building out some of their vehicles, their fleet, converting them to more of a green fleet.
Oh, it's the green fleet?
Yeah.
That makes sense. Thank you.
So that's what we're working on, and we'll bring back some thoughts to you about that.
Great. Looking forward to seeing that come forward. I had also requested a presentation or information. I know councilmember Middleton sits as our representative on the Sunline board. I know we've gotten some comments from the public and questions about Sunline's operations, and so I know you said you have board meetings coming up. So it's not urgent, but I would be interested if there, if ever there is a time for Sunline to come in the next few months, since, you know, operations have changed, and people rely on them to get to work, and City Hall, and all of those things. So I'd like to just add that to the wish list of presentations if I can.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm certain that we can make that happen, and I can certainly provide an update myself if that's desired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I believe a couple of years ago, there was discussed turf conversion at City Hall, and I've been talking to people in our historic preservation about actually a desert scape restoration, which would be both turf conversion withdrawal tolerant, but also the original landscape of City Hall was Garrett Ekbo, and was a very, it was a historic, a landscape architect of renown. And we have original photographs of what it looks like. I think also, just in terms of sustainability, when we promoted that, we shouldn't have turf in front of our City Hall. So, and I think this actually could be a very impactful restoration and show how turf conversion can actually be extremely attractive in keeping what our city was, our architecture and a lot of our founding of our city. And there may be some other, our historic preservation said they could add some things about some shade as well, that might be updates and still be acceptable. So with council support, I'd like to give direction to staff to put together plans for the historic landscape restoration and desert scape, and obtain competitive bids on that.
I think we did approve moving to desert scape quite some time ago. It may have even been right before I joined the council, or right after I joined the council. So I think this is already in progress in some way. So if we can just see what the status is, and if it's not started, if we can start it, that would be great.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, we've, and we've had some conversations about this, too. Of course, you've approved a good amount of funding for residents to do their own desert conversion. We think, you know, we should be setting a good example, too. And we've had some conversations with Ken Lyons and our historic preservation office, and there's some work that we would want to do with community engagement outreach and talking about it, but there's some wonderful historical photos of what the original landscaping looked like, and we'd be pleased to come back to council with some of the work that he's done, and share that with you, and get some further direction going forward.
Thank you. So I think it can be limited, right, to just approving what's going to be done, because we are, prior council already approved moving from grass to desert landscape. Is that correct? I don't know if anyone remembers this.
I'm not aware of that, but we're.
It was a long time ago.
Go ahead.
Mayor, councilmembers, Teresa Galavan, Assistant City Manager. I do recall we had approval from council to do turf conversions in a number of parks, but that was not specific to the front of City Hall. My understanding is, at one time, many years ago, there was some consideration of the front of City Hall, and that did not proceed. The process for the front of City Hall will involve the Historic Site Preservation Board as part of that process. So it's a few more steps.
Great, thank you. That's fine. I just want to make sure that we're looking back and finding out what we have approved before, as we move forward. Obviously, we still have not moved forward with the project yet, but I do want to make sure that we have an accurate record of what council, prior councils have approved as we're moving forward, and because we do have, we have had a lot of change in staff, I just think it's really important that we're checking our records before we move forward with any projects that we have already discussed in some manner. So just want to put that out there.
Yes, Mayor, we'll dig into that a little bit as part of the information that we bring back to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holstidge.
In that, if we can, you have the same thoughts of me today. We had talked about removing the base of where the Frank Bogart statue was and the surrounding rocks, and we had talked about when that moved forward, moving those rocks so that it wouldn't look like a pile of rocks in front of City Hall, which unfortunately looks like now. So I am really interested in finding out what has been approved, and then moving that forward. I'm not yet, I'm not sure if I have enough information to approve, like, going out to bid, but I'm wondering if we could either send it to the Historic Site Preservation Board or another commission, if that would be appropriate, or just have staff bring back a, you know, discussion item with a staff rapport, and then we could see, like, scope. We have, obviously, a lot of capital projects. We've had mayors in the past who raised all of the needed capital projects for City Hall. I continually talk about our City Hall as iconic. People get married here, they come from all over the world to get married here. We have to do a lot of beautification of City Hall, and so I don't want to pick one thing over others, but hopefully we'll have a lot of preservationists who want to help fund that work.
That is actually some of the conversations that we've had, that there is potentially historic preservation money to do this, if it's historic, if it's both a desert scape restoration as well as turf conversion. But yes, I do agree, this is not a priority over other higher priorities, but I think there is a way to do this that is not a burdensome or takeaway from other things in our city, but additive.
I think it's a great idea, and I would love to see it converted to how it originally was intended.
Great. So if we can get that item on the, an upcoming agenda, are there any other agenda requests at this time? Councilmember DeHart.
Yeah, I would, you know, everybody knows we've had this signature gathering effort in town for the proposed ballot measure to amend the downtown specific plan. I think, or what I'd like to do is, I'd like to ask council that, understanding that the counting's not completed and certified by the county registrar, I would like to see us be forward in planning, and if the requisite number of signatures are approved, that we agendize for the November 9 meeting, at least having a conversation of what we can, what avenues we have available to us at that point. So I just would like to get ahead of the ball, and if they don't get certified, then we don't need to have a conversation. But I'd like to see if we can't have that for November 9 to get the conversation going.
Thank you, councilmember. On December 4th, we have a special council meeting to discuss this issue. So it's already on the, on our calendar. City manager, city attorney, if you want to talk more about that meeting?
Yeah, I mean, if the, I can give you a brief update. If the certification results in the requisite number of signatures, then by law, we would have to bring it to the council, probably sometime in December, early December, and that would probably be a special meeting based on the timing of our regular meeting. If the council, in addition to that likely special meeting in December, would like a discussion, just for discussion purposes, at the November meeting, we can provide that. It's up to the council.
If, councilmember DeHart, go ahead.
Yeah, we just looked at an upcoming calendar schedule, and December 4 wasn't there, so the public wasn't aware of that. So I'm thinking, if we have a special meeting on December 4, I'd like to be better prepared at that meeting so we can really bring action, because I understand there's a real, timing is important. So having that discussion on November 9 would better prepare me for what's to come on December 4. So that's what I'm asking council's support to have that discussion.
Is there any comments from council on that? So my thinking is that we would be having the same discussion twice. I mean, I would be supportive of having a memo from the city attorney to give us an understanding of what our options are, or even meeting with the city attorney.
Yeah, would be good.
But I don't want to rehash the conversation twice, if possible.
I can certainly prepare that in advance of November 9.
Is that okay with everyone?
That's good.
Okay. Because I agree, we should be, we should be well-prepared for the special meeting. I agree. All right. Any other requests from council or comments? Councilmember Holstidge.
Thank you. I'd like to request, Madam Mayor, if I can, a letter to the Governor of California, and also Health and Human Services Secretary Becerra for the federal government, and copy all of our elected officials at this, you know, state and federal levels for an issue that is really important, and our region is struggling with access to vaccine supply for COVID vaccines for pediatric patients, so six months and older. I've spent the last few weeks working with the County Public Health Department, with Desert Healthcare District, and a number of other agencies, trying to find supply for parents who have reached out to me, residents of Palm Springs with children, obviously the federal and state public health advice is to get your children vaccinated for COVID-19, and also RSV. But because of our zip code, our parents are unable to access the vaccine essentially at all. The public health director confirmed that some of the nearest locations are Temecula or further. So other regions of California have access to supply. We worked incredibly hard when I was mayor during the pandemic. We worked so hard to vaccinate our residents, and it's really sad that we're leaving small children behind. And so actually, most patients in the Coachella Valley, we never received supply even for the booster a year ago, and so many of our children are completely unvaccinated from COVID. And so this is a statewide and federal issue. There's obviously problems with supply, but one of the problems is that local pediatricians are not ordering supply, so local pediatricians are not offering that to local children. And then also, there's issues with Medi-Cal coverage. So I'd love to have the mayor issue a letter on behalf of the city council, if there's support for that issue, to work with the governor and the Secretary Becerra to ensure that we can fight for vaccine supply for our youngest residents.
That's fine with me.
Thank you.
Looks like we have some support from council on that. All right. Thank you very much for raising that issue, councilmember Holstidge. So at this time, we will take a 10-minute break, and then we will come back to address our final agenda item, which is our cannabis issue. So we'll see you back at 8:17. 3B, for an update on our cannabis ordinance and to discuss the possibility of a moratorium. Go ahead.
... opportunity to discuss the Palm Springs cannabis industry and provide direction to staff regarding potential regulatory changes. In addition, a request for 45-day moratorium on new cannabis permits and transfers is being requested. On September 26, staff presented to council an overview of the Palm Springs cannabis industry. We presented to council challenges at the federal, state, and local level. Council requested that staff return recommendations to address the local challenges the industry is presently facing. The local challenges include local tax rates and over-concentration of retail dispensaries. Currently, our tax rates are 10% grocery receipts for retail sales, $5 per square foot of canopy for cultivation, 2% on manufacturing, and a 0% rate on distribution. There is currently no cap on retail cannabis permits. We are recommending a reduction of the retail cannabis tax from 10% to 5% of grocery receipts, an implementation of a 2% distribution tax, no changes to the current cultivation and manufacturing tax. We're also requesting to revise the definition of grocery receipts and cannabis accessory in our cannabis tax ordinance, also requesting a cannabis equity tax incentive and that we determine an allocation of local tax revenue for social good to be determined by council. In comparison to other local Coachella Valley cities, you will see that the only other city that currently has a 10% grocery receipts tax is Desert Hot Springs, with the majority of the Coachella Valley cities being at 5% and 6%. We are also requesting that staff implement a 2% distribution tax. In February 2019, we suspended the distribution tax. However, we did maintain the right to return, to resume collection. Initially, the distribution tax was the same as the retail tax rate, which is 10%, and that would have caused a financial hardship at, as described at that time. When we did suspend the distribution tax, the distributors were responsible for collecting the retail and cultivation excise taxes and providing that to the state. As of January 1 of this past year, that is no longer the case. Staff is recommending a moderate 2% tax on grocery receipts. On this slide, you'll see an overview of the grocery receipts reported for distributors in the city for fiscal year 2223. This amount is not accurate in that we do have some distributors who have not complied with reporting and we have been enforcing that if they do not comply with reporting, their permit may be suspended until they are current on the receipts. However, as you can see, the receipts are rather substantial and if we were to implement a 2% distribution tax, that would generate approximately $200,000 a year in local tax revenue. In comparison to other cities, you will see that they all have zero, with the exception of Coachella. However, Indio does not permit distribution. Cathedral City and Palm Desert do not permit distribution on its own. So in order to have a distribution permit, you must either have a cultivation or manufacturing permit. So they're still paying the tax on the cultivation and manufacturing. With regard to our cultivation and manufacturing tax, staff is recommending no changes. We currently have one of the lowest tax rates for cultivation in the Coachella Valley, which generated $265,000 this past year. There's currently six cultivation projects in the pipeline with a total of 22,400 square feet of canopy with the projected local cannabis tax revenue of $112,000 annually. With regard to manufacturing in fiscal year 2223, we saw $33,000 in the manufacturing tax revenue. With regard to the definitions that we are asking for revisions, the definition of grocery receipt currently includes the state's excise tax. This is something that we previously had discussed. As it reads, now we are essentially taxing tax on tax. So we are looking to eliminate the state excise tax from the definition of grocery receipts. This has also gathered support from the state and there was recently some legislation introduced that would eliminate the excise tax from the definition of grocery receipts for cities and counties. In addition, we are asking that we include a definition for cannabis accessory. There presently is not one. It is important to include it as cannabis accessories are taxed the same as cannabis. So if they were to buy rolling papers, lighters, bongs, for example, they should be defined so we can collect that tax on it as well. With regard to allocations, we're asking for a 1% of our taxes collected to go towards our equity program. Next year, the state, for grant purposes, are requesting that state, that the cities and counties have buy-in, that we provide, provide some type of assistance for our equity program. So this would meet that requirement. Another request is an allocation of a percentage of our local tax revenue for social good. This is something that we have not done. Currently, all of our cannabis tax revenue does go into our general fund. This would provide for it to assist our local community. The next topic that we address as a local challenge is oversaturation. There's currently 33 cannabis retailers permitted to operate in the city. There are 27 that are operating and you'll see a map of all those dots represent cannabis businesses throughout the city. And you can see there are definitely areas that we have an oversaturation. Based on the number of businesses that we have, there is currently one dispensary for every 2,100 residents. Staff is recommending that we establish a cap for retail dispensaries, that we prohibit the sale and or transfer of dispensary permits during the moratorium, that any dispensary that is not operating may not renew their permit. We are also requesting that we implement a one-owner, one-dispensary rule. Any businesses that currently have, we would allow them to continue, we would grandfather them in. We did look to other cities to see what caps they have and as you can see, every city, with the exception of Palm Springs, has a cap. Cathedral City is currently at 20 with a population of 51,493. Coachella has a cap of 10 with a population of 41,941. Desert Hot Springs is at 16 with a population of 32,512 and Indio at 5 with a population of 89,137. Currently, none of these cities are accepting new applications for cannabis dispensaries. Our staff worked diligently to reach out to each city to get that information. So even though Cathedral City has not reached their cap, they are no longer accepting applications. Desert Hot Springs stopped accepting applications when they reached their cap. Several of their dispensaries have closed, but they are not looking to fill those vacant permits. So every city has kind of stepped back to evaluate how the business is currently doing. And with regard to adding more dispensaries, they are all freezing that process at this time. In addition to the requests that we are making and recommendations, we are asking for a 45-day moratorium. This would allow staff the time to work with council to create new rules and regulations for the cannabis industry. It would also allow us to work with stakeholders for their feedback as well. So at this time, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Veronica. I appreciate that very efficient presentation. Do we have comments or questions from council? Mayor Protem.
Yes, thank you very much, Veronica. I've been waiting for this all year, so, and even when I was prior to council and part of my business groups, I think almost everything in here we had put as a potential suggestion. I have some questions. First, for the City Attorney, if it's a 45-day, that is a pre-maximal amount that we can do, the moratorium?
Initially, yes. As Ms. Goodhart indicated, if the council adopts this tonight and wishes to adopt an extension, you can do that for up to 10 months and 15 days because the 45 days will end before our December meeting. If the council adopts this ordinance tonight, then staff and the City Attorney's Office would be prepared to bring back an extension at the November 9 meeting so that it'll continue at least for another 10 and a half months.
Okay. So at November 9, we would have to discuss whether to extend or not?
Correct.
Okay. I have another question, Veronica. On page 17, it looks like you have two full-time cannabis code enforcement officers in addition to a portion of other staff and the business, the tax revenue is going down to 1.5 million. So given all our costs, how profitable is this industry now for our city? I mean, not that it's not good to have, but...
The cost of our code enforcement is covered through our permitting, through our permitting fees. So it wouldn't be impacted by the reduction of the tax rate.
Okay. Do we, do we have any cultivation left in our city?
We recently had one of our largest cultivators surrender all their licenses. However, we do have six projects in the pipeline at this time. There is one current cultivator who is operating. Two of the pipeline projects are near operational status.
Okay. On, on the, it says we've received 2.5 or 2.4 million in grants for the equity funding. So how is that money used?
We provide grants to our equity permities for the startup cost of their operations to assist with rents, to assess with product, to capital improvements. It also covers all of the city's permitting... It also covers all of the city's permitting fees as well as fees for building, planning, the CUP process. So it covers all the fees for the city and for their initial build-out. It also covers the cost for our consultants who provide education and support for their business.
Okay. And I support the program. We've had four equity businesses, is that right?
Correct.
Is that 2.4 gone between those four?
No, we still have additional fundings and we are requesting more next year.
Okay. So then that is the next question because on page 28, you talk about a tax incentive for the equity retail businesses. So their retail would go from 10 to 2.5, is that right?
Correct. Or we can set it at a different rate, perhaps 3% or 3.5%. Just something to assist them. A lot of cities are now implementing that because we don't know what our grant funding will look like because the state is also seeing a decrease in tax revenue. And that's where the funds for this program are generated.
Okay. I mean, in addition to the initial money they get, they get money over time?
Correct. Primarily to continue with all the permitting fees and renewal. We do offer assistance for rents as well.
Okay. It seems to go from 10 to 2.5 is a big break. I mean, I want to help them with the other funding, but that's... In terms of other cities, is Desert Hot Springs looking to lower their rate? Do you know, I've heard they are.
To my knowledge, for retail, they are not. However, they have expressed with discussions with them that the issue is that current retailers are not current on their taxes. That's why they're not looking to extend any incentives at this time.
Okay.
Reductions.
Or can we only lower the taxes for people who are... Do we have anybody who's not current?
We actually have a very good finance team and a really good compliance team. So we are very on top of operators who are delinquent. We have one operator who is delinquent, but however, he's a cultivator. Our retailers come into compliance within a month.
Okay. So a question for the city attorney. Can we do the tax reduction? You have to be current on your taxes to get that?
Legally, you could, yes.
Okay. Okay. That would seem to make sense. And you list different people who have different businesses who have surrendered their permits or rejected or revoked or had them abandoned. Do you know, do you have any idea how many of those had leased or bought a building to operate on?
I know there was one who purchased. The rest have leased.
Okay. But they could be out if they lost their lease. And do we have only one dispensary that has two licenses, two permits?
Correct. At this time, there is only one.
Didn't Holland Farms get a second one?
They have a cultivation.
Oh, a cultivation, okay. I'm sorry. Okay. And on the selling of the permits, that we say that's regardless of whether they're operational or not?
During the moratorium period, yes. I have seen other cities that in their additional ordinances, they did have a provision that permits could not be transferred. So that is something that would be left for stakeholder input and further work with council to determine if that is something we'd like to include in the revisions.
Okay. I mean, I understand the concept of preventing people from getting permits just to sell them. But the idea of somebody has run a business for years and retires, that normal business owners can sell their business.
Correct. So that's something we can bring back, is criteria for sale or transfer.
Okay. That's something that we might want to look at. On page eight of the ordinance section, let's see where it was. We talk about, you'll continue to process requests that are accepted and deemed complete along with requests for approvals. So if somebody is waiting for an approval and they're not, and is waiting for this city to do something, we won't do any response for 45 days, is that right?
If their application is deemed complete, we will continue to process. We have, this week alone, we've received three inquiries for new permit applications because they were aware that we were addressing this. But we have only received one this week.
Okay. So I guess because the language reads it's deemed complete along with requests for approvals and all these other things. So if there's still, shouldn't be those on complete, all the approvals on complete, right?
With the ones in the pipeline, all their approvals are complete. They have their land use, their odor control received. This would be if somebody wanted to submit a brand-new, a new application.
A brand-new application, okay. That's what I want to make sure. Okay. Well, I have just some comments here, but you know, I think we absolutely need to have a limit on the number. We are way oversaturated. I think you said we had, did you say we have 33?
33 that are permitted. And of those 33, there are, I believe I have it in there, 27 that are actually operating.
So with 33 and a population of 4,500, that's one per every 1,300 people.
Yes. If they were all operating, that's what it would break down to.
And I also look in another way. I think California has two per 100,000, we're kind of, could have 68 per 100,000.
We are the most saturated city in the state and there's evidence of support in the actual nation.
Okay. Yeah. And we've had different times where it's been up to 42, right?
Correct.
Okay. So that's one for almost every thousand person. Okay. And I also, you know, want to just say from an economic development point of view, we are seeing a problem with people closing businesses, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And I would say I know there's been issues with, I know one person went to a hair salon for 20 years and lost their business because a person wanted to put in a cannabis. I know one cannabis went in with other places that had month-to-month rents. And as soon as the cannabis went in, all of their rents went up, you know. And so maybe that is the market rate. But if that cannabis place closed because they wasn't really in the proper industry, then all these other businesses are now in trouble. And I think our small businesses are very important to our city, including cannabis, but not 33 of them. And I think with any kind of new industry, we have to actually have nurtured it. And I know other people have said things about being a free market economy, but the United States is actually a mixed market. It's not a free market. And so we do lots of regulation. And by letting it get to this point, we probably hurt the industry more than anything than helping it. And I would rather help it. I'm very proud that our city was early on with this. I do think that it might be a little bit unfair if we have one person who has two permits to say to everybody else that they can't open a new dispensary, but if they wanted to merge with or take over an existing one, it might be a little bit unfair because now we've given an economic advantage to the one person who's already in there. So I want to think about that. I don't know if you have any thoughts on whether, like if two of our existing ones wanted, one owner wanted to take over the other, we're saying they can't do that.
We can definitely explore some options for the transfer of existing businesses and set criteria.
Okay. All right. That might be a fair way to do it to our existing ones. Operational. So I think those were my comments. I'm absolutely in favor of the moratorium and the cap and all the other points you raised. My only caveats were looking at whether other people can have two, whether operational businesses can't transfer, whether the going from 10 to 2.5 for the social equity people is not too far down, or whether there's other ways to keep supporting them without doing that. And I do believe very strongly in the allocation of funds for social good. I think that was actually a suggestion that the mayor said to me last year. So I do support that. But this is great. I really appreciate it. That's all my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have comments or questions? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you. First, I support everything that Mayor Protem Bernstein had to say in questions. Veronica, thank you for an outstanding report. Really appreciate this. Do we have an accurate number on how many potential new cannabis dispensaries are in the works, either that have filed with the planning department or actually are in progress?
There's one, two pending, two pending retail. One is a component of a microbusiness and one is a standalone dispensary.
Two that are pending. Any others that are in planning?
No, I don't believe we do.
All right. Thank you. So I very strongly support the idea of a moratorium. I think we are horribly oversaturated. It makes it extremely difficult for anyone to succeed. I feel very badly for those who came in with so many dreams in terms of what they could accomplish and have ran into what is just an overly competitive market. Also, we have seen, which I'm not sure anyone accurately predicted, the resilience of the illegal market among us. And it was certainly my hope that with the legalization of cannabis, we would have seen a far greater move to the purchase of legal products. I think we do need to make a limit. Not only is it going to be healthier for the cannabis industry, most critically, the rise in rents, in commercial rents because of the competition from the cannabis industry has been real. It's been significant. And we face with a... I don't want to predict this, but there is a probability that we are going to have a substantial number of these businesses that are not going to make it. And that's going to throw another disruption into our commercial real estate market. So this is the prudent thing to do. Our tax rates currently are higher than most other cities in the Coachella Valley. And I'm certainly open to conversation, but I'm not convinced that it's taxation that's the issue here. Our taxes are not historically unreasonable for this product. What we're seeing is city after city trying to cut their taxes significantly in order to save an industry that is just simply overpopulated with distribution points. So I'm open to it, but there is a limit at which if we cut the taxes, we just simply have no revenue whatsoever coming out of this industry. So we need to figure out what's it going to take to make for a healthy industry? And what is the number that's going to be there? I would support the idea that we not take anyone's permit away, but that we add no new permits until we get down to whatever that figure is that we establish is a reasonable number of dispensaries in our city. Lastly, I think the grow facilities have significantly improved in terms of odor control and the like, and I appreciate that. But let us not forget that the greatest disruption to our residential communities came to those communities that are most disadvantaged and most close to the commercial, or excuse me, the manufacturing areas. And some of them have not recovered from some of the odor issues that they have had to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeHart, did you have anything? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Veronica. Appreciate this. So just a number of things to help better understand the revenue that is coming in. And in the presentation, if we can get an update, you know, what is the per capita figure? You know, you gave me total population and numbers of... But if you could just give us that on that spreadsheet or the chart you have, where you have the number of cannabis, what's the per cap in each of the cities so we can see that comparison? And why do we have to have the cannabis or excise tax collection on accessories?
The cannabis taxes, that's actually a state. That's actually came from the state. We just never clearly defined it in our ordinance. But if you were to review the state regulations, it defines cannabis accessory and they are taxable by the CDFTA. So we just are behind in clarifying that in our ordinance.
So do all cities tax, have the cannabis tax on accessories?
Yes. If you look at our local Coachella Valley cities, it's defined in their definitions. We just did not see that at that time, did not catch it.
Okay. So why, or what are we basing the suggestion on implementing a one-owner, one-dispensary rule? So what's the basis of that?
It would be to reach the cap, Suter. We have several dispensaries that when they start seeing success, immediately want a second location. And with the oversaturation at this time, I think we should stop that, you know, stop allowing that until we reach the cap. And like I said, we can always revisit how we introduce that and have criteria. So if a business has been operating for a certain amount of years without any issues with code, you know, they would be allowed to have a second location. We could discuss different options on how to allow a second location.
But what would we care if one owner has three or four if our cap is still at 20?
If our cap is still at 20, we can definitely reuse it and we can add language. I'm sure, I would have to ask legal if we could add language to any proposed regulations that states that until we reach our cap, owners may only have one dispensary. And at the later time, then they could have additional once we reach our cap.
But what's the reasoning for that? Why do we care if one owner has three dispensaries or six?
Honestly, I don't have an answer for that. I just have been reviewing other cities' regulations and a lot of them have implemented a one-dispensory, one-person rule.
Yeah, I'm curious to know what the basis of that would be. Why do we care if an entrepreneur is successful and we are under our cap? I'd be curious to know where that might have come from, you know, even in other cities.
I can do additional research and provide that to you.
Yeah. There's got to be some reason that we started using that. Okay, you're going to get the per cap. And so the moratorium or the pause, so what does it mean? I know you explained it already, but I didn't, it's still not clear to me. If somebody's in process, they're not going to be paused. So what does it mean to be in process?
They have an application in, all the fees have been paid, and they've submitted all the materials to complete the review process. They've done their background, they have completed their odor control plans, they've had their land use review.
And what's next after they have submitted all that?
They're issued a conditional cannabis permit, which allows them to start the state process and start the processes with building and planning if they need a CUP or if they, to do building improvements. So that's the next step.
Yeah, okay. All right. And a question for colleagues. Is this information coming from the subcommittee or your work in generating an ordinance, proposed ordinance?
We gave a number of these, I'm sorry. I can answer. We gave a number of suggestions, but at this point, by the time we had done it, they had already come forward with their presentation. And so I think what Veronica said is that most of the things that we talked about, she said, well, those are all the things that I've already put in. So that's sort of how it worked. We just had about 10 bullet points, most of which are these.
Yeah. Just, it's basically staff was already thinking about all the things we wanted them to think about.
So there's a number of places where we're using a percentage or we're saying we'd like to use this number going forward, like the set-aside allocation of 1% of local cannabis tax revenue. What is that projection over, you know, the next five years? So this 1% figure, what do we anticipate that's going to be to support the social good program? So if we can see what that would be over time, I'd appreciate that. Let's see. And you made a comment that we are the most saturated in the state of California?
Yes.
How, is that based on... How, is that based on population, number of dispensaries?
Yes, it's based on number of dispensaries per the, each city's population.
That seems crazy to me. Have you been to Eugene? That just seems unbelievable. Okay. So, what's the cost for allowing cannabis retailers to reinvest 20% of the excise taxes that they collect on their own businesses? So, again, what is, what is that impact over four years, five years? And then we've got... I think that was it. And when it comes back on November 9, because we just have to extend it because we're not meeting Jeff, is, do we, do we extend for 10 months or are we extending for a different period of time?
The statute only allows the council to extend for up to 10 months and 15 days. You could do it for shorter, you could do it for six months.
So, that's just the maximum?
Correct. Now, after that 10 months and 15 days, the statute does allow for another 12 months if the council finds that it needs additional time. But at least with this next extension, it's just 10 months and 15 days.
Yeah. So, what are, what is coming back to us on November 9?
It would basically be an ordinance nearly identical to this, but with a different time period for 10 months and 15 days. That the criteria that we're, that we're asking the council to adopt tonight would be the same.
Okay, all right. I think that was it, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate my colleagues' comments. One of the things with the cap, a potential cap, I do want to make sure that we have a diversity of cannabis businesses. For instance, we have lounges and I like lounges in the sense that there's a place where people can go, where they can use cannabis products, especially if they're smoking, because we don't want people, we don't want an uprise of complaints because people are smoking outside, for instance, if they can be in a location that allows for it. And so, I want to make sure that we have enough lounges to accommodate the tourist economy that we have. Because I understand this oversaturation in relation to our population, but are we, are we oversaturated in terms of the tourist economy that we have? And that's one of the questions that I have. Do you know offhand?
I do not offhand. I'd have to refer with that information.
Because I, I think that would be real, that's important for me in terms of figuring out a cap, you know, is, what is the number of, what is the ideal number based on our tourist economy and not just on our, on our, our year-round population? The other is, and I really appreciate your, your staff recommendations. I, I think those are all great, especially the 1% tax to make sure that we're, we're participating with the social equity program. And I do want to make sure that we are protecting our social equity program in every way we can. And if we are to put a cap on, I did like the comment from Dieter about how do we make sure that social equity applicants are still able to get into this business? Because as we've seen, we had many, many applications come in for cannabis businesses before we ever got one social equity applicant come in. So, how do we make sure that those folks are still able to be a part of this and contribute? The same thing with like transferring of business licenses. Do we want to make an exception if there's a transfer that would end up going to a social equity applicant? You know, I just want to think through some of those options to make sure that we're not, we're basing, we're not saying, well, we have four applicant, we have four social equity businesses and that's, that's it. That's what I want to prevent from happening and just to make sure they're able to get it, continue to get into the market. Let's see. And then the other thing regarding the taxes, I think Councilmember Middleton makes a good point, you know, is it oversaturation or is it taxes? However, since all the other Valley cities have lowered their taxes, it does put us in somewhat of a bind. But I am curious what the impact has been since those other cities have lowered their taxes? What are we seeing from those other cities? And what can we learn from what they've done? And, and do we want to go directly in line with what those, what the rest of the Valley is doing? Or do we want to still have a little bit of a higher tax, but lower it overall? And I, and I know we are hearing from our cannabis folks that are here tonight saying that they, they do want those lower taxes and that they think they'll sell more products because of it, et cetera. So, I want to be mindful of that too. But I, I am just interested in, since we're the last ones to consider lowering taxes, if we can make sure that we're, we're looking at what's been going on in, in the other desert cities or even in comparable cities in California. So, that information would be helpful.
We have seen an increase in reports of deliveries into our cities from other cities because the current state regulations don't prohibit other cities from delivering to any city in the state. So, anyone could call retailer in Cathedral City or in Indio and have a delivery to Palm Springs and they're going to pay less than what they would if they were to shop locally.
And do we know the percentage of business that's coming into the city in that way?
It's very difficult to track, but we now have access to metric and we can work with other cities of access to their metrics and we can generate some figures for you and bring those back for you.
Great, yeah, I think that would be really helpful. And I, I think if we have that kind of information, it gives us a better opportunity of how we want to handle this, this information. I think my, my laptop is about to die. I think that's really the, the big points that I wanted to make. I really appreciate the comments Mayor Protem and the rest of the council said, said on this. I also support the moratorium. I'm not sure that we need 10 months or 10 and a half months at the next one. For the city attorney, do we need to, at the next meeting, if we want to discuss the length, can we? Or do we need to give you direction now on what that length could potentially be?
Either one, if you want to give direction tonight, you can. If not, we'll bring back the maximum length and if the council wants to shorten it, you can.
Yeah, Veronica, if you could, on November 9, if you were, would be able to just speak to us about what length you think would be appropriate? I think that would be helpful too. But, but also city attorney, if we just, if we make it our own change prior to that 10-month period, then our ordinance would then dissolve, right?
Correct. Say we're in month seven, the council can always terminate it. And I think you did that to some respect, in some respect with the vacation rental ordinance. But yeah, you have that authority.
Okay, so then it's, it's not as big of a deal as I thought. All right, well, thank you, I really appreciate that. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I did, yeah, I want to just respond because of the tax issue and I was thinking, and I appreciate Councilmember Middleton for sort of articulating that better. It may not be taxation, but just oversaturation. But I think unfortunately, we've gone too far down. And so, we have oversaturation and then we have two other cities that did not have cannabis adjacent to us when we started, who are now delivering in. So, unfortunately, we have oversaturation and the other ones have a lower tax rate or, I guess Desert Hot Springs doesn't, but they're not paying their taxes or they're delinquent. But, but there's also a concern, as the mayor said, there's, there's always a race to the bottom, you know? And that's what we got to be careful of, that if we lower ours to five, that they go back and they do it four and then all of a sudden, and we're never going to, we're going to end up with no revenue. So, I think I want to be a little bit careful, but I think, you know, maybe it is a little, a little bit higher. I mean, I think that might be an option. I do want to address the one permit, one, one per person. This has come up in other places in California and a lot of it, to Councilmember DeHart's things, it was because there was like larger corporations coming in or organizations buying multiple permits and hurting the local businesses. And I think what we've seen with the social equity program and even our local businesses who are not in the social equity program, it is important to support local businesses. So, I'm not sure, I mean, I agree that maybe it could be two, but if you started to have one person have all 10 licenses, then it would be very difficult for the others. So, I think we got to be a little bit careful about that. The one other thing, I don't know if it's mentioned in here, we talked about educational materials. I think, I think we should look at requirements because I've heard this from a number of people and tourists do come and they try edibles for the first time and aren't really sure how they interact with their body. And I've heard this from restaurateurs, they go and have a drink and they took, they took a second edible because they didn't think it had an effect and all of a sudden it has an effect. So, I think what other cities have done is they've required dispensaries to give out educational materials. And I think you had a one-page flyer that just sort of explains it could take a couple hours or whatever the time is before this takes effect. And I think that would be helpful, especially for our, our tourists who may or may not be doing it for the first time.
In the attached State of Cannabis Report, it is in our recommendations to dispensaries that they provide educational materials. It would be mandatory for lounges and optional for dispensaries, but we could make it mandatory for both. They would be created in-house and we would provide them to the, to the businesses to provide, rather than let them create their own. That way they're uniform and we know that information is accurate.
I, I think it would be helpful. I know education was a big issue when we opened the Cannabis Prevention Center at the Boys and Girls Club and there, and there was other people speaking about this, that, you know, there's, there's younger people may be using it, the parents may be using it in front of their kids, that's more helpful for, to have that education out there. It can't, certainly can't hurt. And, and I know from everything I've read, things are getting stronger and stronger as, over time and, or more potent. So, it's probably important to have that in there. So, I'm, I want to really thank you for this. I know it was a lot of work and it was really well presented and, and you covered everything I'm concerned about, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much Veronica, I really appreciate that report. Do we have a motion and a second on this 45-day moratorium? I have a motion from Councilmember DeHart and a second from Mayor Protem. And are our voting things working? Okay, they are. So, we can, we can vote by our buttons. All right. Oh, do you need to, do you need to do a voiceover for the record on that? Okay, go ahead.
So, I have a motion by Councilmember DeHart.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bernstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Mayor Garner.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I want to make sure that's clear for the record. So, the, there is a 45-day moratorium with the 4-0 vote, which we needed a 4-fifth vote.
Read the title.
Yes, go ahead with the title.
Urgency ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California, adopting an immediate moratorium on city approval of new applications and transfer permits to engage in cannabis retail for consideration of appropriate amendments to the municipal code in accordance with Government Code Section 65858.
Thank you very much. And Veronica, can you tell us, or city manager, what is the timing and when this will come back again? Not, not just the, the actual full discussion with the ordinance changes.
The cannabis, that we're talking, we'll, we'll bring it back at the next meeting.
No, that's just to extend the moratorium. I'm talking about all of the things that Veronica just discussed.
I would like time for stake, stakeholder input, so some stakeholder meetings, some study sessions. So, I would imagine that it's going to take, I would like to see it happen after the New Year, shortly after the New Year. So, that's the goal, as quickly as possible, because especially with the moratorium, we don't want to leave it in place too long.
Okay, thank you very much, just want to get a sense of timing. I appreciate that. All right, thank you, council. So, with that, we'll move on to public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker and we have one person on Zoom, so I want to go ahead and go to them, that's Brad Anderson.
Yes, good evening. My name's Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Rancho Rios. I want to apologize, I was going to make tonight's meeting, but I had other commitments and I couldn't make it. But that brings a point of interest to me. I went to your agenda to look up the access codes to call into this meeting and it wasn't on your agenda. I had to go to your website. And then I had to send an email to your clerk to get access codes. So, right there, you're not compliant with AB 361 unless you say you are. So, that's a big issue, I think. But anyway, I just wanted to talk on that. And another very important point was that, one of the items tonight was the constitutional amendments, ACA 13 and ACA 1. If you voted for that, which I think you did, I would say that you're not for any property owner or anybody that pays rent in this city, because that's a tax, just a blatant, blatant attack on Prop 13. So, I think people, you can write your letters and I will do the same. And I hope everybody gets involved in that one because that's a big deal. And I wanted to start one more thing really quick. I'm sorry, I'm looking at my notes. Just the way you operate your meetings too, I'm really, you had to present item 1T, which is more of a discussion. And then that last item, you had a 4-fifth vote and then one of your council members left. It's just odd. So, anyway, and you have a vector control trustee that you appointed from your city and it's time to change trustees out because mosquitoes are the worst ever and that, that trustee has a conflict with the general manager and his part. So, let's reconsider our appointments and that's all I have. Have a great evening, good night.
Thank you. Next speaker is Zachary Daniel Stone, followed by Alejandro Mesa Aguilar.
Oh my God, let's get this thing started right now. Brad crushed it. Did you guys hear that? Were y'all taking notes at all? Holy shit, this man is amazing. He had everything right then. Brad, you are one of my heroes. Where's the camera? Let me make sure I'm looking dead right at, oh, Brad, you're my hero, man. All right, let's see. Food trucks. Y'all are awesome. Y'all are on top of it. Let's see. You guys talked about food trucks in parks, which you would need access to restrooms. So, Terry Lewis, she used to apparently work for the undersheriff, she was talking with me the other day, telling me that, Zach, please bring this up. And all right, California code, require toilet and shower facilities. For anything in a park, apparently here in this state, doesn't matter if it's a city, whatever kind of park it is, anything over an acre has to have a toilet. So, AB 2017, right to Restrooms Act of 2021, says every public agency serving or open to the public and that maintains restroom facilities for the public, make every water closet available without cost or charge. So, just kind of looking at that for, I know Sunrise Park, so it's 38 acres and you guys were talking about the parks earlier and the food trucks and the vendors and I thought, that's a nice way to weave it all together right here. See, got 26 seconds, doesn't mean I have to take it all, but you know, I like attention. So, that's 20 seconds I would be giving up. Make sure Brad can see this. A weed money sign right here, if he wants to send that some, my Cash App, that's Stoned Loco, S-T-O-N-E-D Loco. Or Venmo, it's just Stone Loco. I know, guys, can't get them all. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Alejandro Mesa Aguilar, followed by David Rios.
Hi, I'm Alejandro Mesa Aguilar. Some of you might know me from ICIJ, but I just come here as a private, privately engaged citizen. I just want to say how great it is, how the council has taken prior knowledge from the street vending ordinance to continue the conversation within formalization of other unformalized industries that would still, you know, retain the youth culture of the Coachella Valley and also maintain the, the quilt and culture and vibrancy of the Coachella Valley. It's great to see this and I hope that this continued effort and scrutiny, you know, still goes on. I know I live in Coachella, but I sometimes come out here in Palm Springs because I love my whole valley. And I just wanted to say, you know, if you're also interested, there's also going to be a CV meetup at the Desert Barbell by Avenue 50, the Walgreens off of Coachella, this Sunday, Taquiza by El Taco Titan. And that can also inform some of how, you know, street vending and that kind of method is, is going on in other, in other routes as well. But, you know, it's great to see this going forward and it could definitely feel like a difficult conversation, but it's a very necessary one, especially to stimulate local development and see how we can retain the youth culture here as well, whether it's either families or even just individuals. But... But it's great to see this effort, so I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Last speaker is David Rios.
Good evening, everyone, Madam Mayor and City Council. So finally, some positive news I'd like to bring to your attention. This week, the federal government passed AB 1033, which is the Affordable Housing Act. And it's something that I would suggest that we take in consideration. It's huge. Currently, we have four ADU permits that our city is currently acting on, and they basically are all projects that I designed. One of them being Scott Stiles', a personal friend, the Lermus from Orange County, Rick and Jeffrey. But that's been taking us two years. This program is going to allow people to turn their garages into condos, which is amazing. So you can either rent it or you can sell it as an individual unit. Right now, we have about 1,000, the average city is averaging 1,000 permits, and those are all from retirees, 85% of them. So now the government is also allowing FHA rules and regulations. So it's going to allow them to, if they're on social security, they can go and apply for an FHA loan, and they can say, potentially, I'm going to be receiving 50% of the rent. And they don't need to have season money, they don't have to have taxes that are filed. They're going to give them 50% of what they're going to get. If it's an existing one, they're giving them 75% of, of what they're getting for rent. So that's huge. It's helping our elderly community, it's helping us. Now, let's talk about the money that we do have. We have about a little under $10 million set aside for affordable housing. If we only took away $1,005,000 and gave that as a grant to incentivize these people, and we also gave them free permits under $3,000, just exactly, if we mimicked exactly what Desert Hot Springs is doing, you get four options to take advantage of it and free permits. They're going crazy there. If we offered that as well, we get about $3 million every single year that comes back to us from TOT and VRBOs and so forth, excuse me, the vacation rentals. If we use 1.5 million, we would be able to help out 100 units like this, and it's tangible. If we gave them all a grant for $15,000, imagine how many people we would be able to affect. A, a, a project right now takes us three to six years. This would take six months, because we have foundation, we have roof, and we have everything else. Thank you, guys, take this in consideration. AB 1033, thank you.
Thank you, David, that's your time. All right. Thank you, council. Our next meeting is Thursday, November 9th, 2023. Hope to see you all at Pride events coming up before then. And happy Halloween, there's, there's a lot going on, so we'll see you all around town. The next meeting, like I said, is November 9th, 2023, at 5:30, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.